Got it.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for coming today for our board retreat. We're gonna go ahead and get started. I know Dr. Salton was trying to get, um, get parked, so we're going to at least go ahead and use our speakers or some of our facilitators for today so that everyone is keenly aware of who everyone is. So I would first like to introduce, but most of you know already very well, Dr. Robert Avosa. So Dr. Avosa is a former superintendent. Uh, and so I say former as in retired, but he worked specifically with boards all across the nation. And so he will be our first facilitator today. The second facilitator today is Ms. Julia Bernat. Ms. Bernat works as a trainer for GSBA. And so this is how you're able to also use this for your hours. So your training report is very full when we submit to the state. And then thirdly, our third facilitator is Dr. Emily, Emily LeBeck. So Dr. LeBeck is actually a retired superintendent as well. She is with the Charter System Foundation. Uh, and Dr. Avosa and Dr. LeBeck were superintendents at the same time, doing the charter work together in Georgia. So one was in Fulton, one was in Marietta. And look, I think today is the first time they've seen one another since 2018. Since 2015. So great, the caterers were able to bring them together. So. Once again, so Dr.
Awesome. Well, great. Uh, good morning, everybody. Good morning. I hope you had a good summer. Looks like you're off to a good start per school year. For those of you who have not met, uh, longtime superintendent, longtime educator, sorry, recovering school superintendent, uh, eight years, uh, at the helm of running two very large competing systems. Um, has taught me a lot and now I share that across the country with, uh, both a superintendent's academy that, uh, we run out of Dallas. Um, they put about a hundred fifty high potential superintendents through the program to help support them in their growth and development. And then I work with school boards far away as Anchorage, as small as Bodataut, uh, and as high performing as our beautiful city schools of the Caterer School District. So the first time I met with you all, we did a little activity called North, South, East, West, where we learned a little bit about our styles and how we wanted to work together. Uh, the second time we met, we did an activity called Lost on the Moon. Some of you stayed on the moon a little longer, some found their way off the moon. Uh, and today we're gonna deepen our conversation as we start off, uh, to get, continue to, to build our communication, our teamwork and our understanding of styles, right? Because governing today, uh, well, governing ever, um, has always been complicated. But, but today we continue to be challenged with things that aren't just about reading, writing, math, right? They're political in nature and we've got to be able to work together to form better understandings of how we approach the work as individual board members, but then collectively, how do we get better, stronger, faster, uh, and all in the name of improving outcomes for kids and closing the gaps that we've seen become all too persistent. So there's the, there's a little activity I'm gonna do with you today based on the Harvard, uh, Business Review article called What Makes Some, What Makes Some Teams, uh, High Performing? So I'm just going to read a little bit to get our mind thinking. And then we're gonna, we're gonna walk through a couple of questions that I think are really interesting and unique. So when you come together as a team, there's a lot to learn. For a superintendent, the system itself was very unfamiliar, right? We work in school systems, but not this one. Maybe we work in a hospital, but not the one that we're in now, right? So you go into a place where you're learning. You have a new school board member, uh, we've got a new student, uh, member, uh, and you're learning and you're trying to figure all that out. And as a team, uh, we gotta continue down that path. So all of us also bring our own personal lived experiences, our experiences as students or as a student right now that's getting ready to graduate, right? Or you did graduate.
I'm getting ready.
You're getting ready to graduate, so congratulations on that. Uh, but we all bring our unique skills, attributes, et cetera, uh, and those can't, we can't hide those, they're just part of who we are. And so, uh, both small scale studies and large research initiatives show that the culture of the team, the habits, the norms, the behaviors among its members have a huge impact on the performance. And so now that, you know, we've got this team together, we've got a leader we can't call new anymore because you've been through a full year. And so that sort of honeymoon phase goes away. Um, and now the expectations continue to grow, both for you all individually, for the superintendent and her great team that she's put together to get this job done. And so each year, good teams continue to invest in themselves, their skills. And fortunately, um, these studies have shown that characteristics make high performing team. Uh, that culture is a big part of it, uh, and that it's important that every person on a team, um, have an opportunity to share and the kinds of skills that they possess. Uh, because at the end of the day, people want to feel like they're contributing to something greater, right? If we understand where we're headed, I know how I may be able to help you, what does that look like? Not below the line management stuff, but pushing your employee, your CEO, the person who's in charge of this place, right? Um, to get better results. And part of that, uh, is making sure that we have a chance to engage in things that are meaningful to us. When I was in Fulton County, I had a school board member, uh, who was really passionate about, um, the budget, believe it or not. She asked a lot of good questions about the budgets. And you're probably guessing who it was. A lot of questions about the budget.
Je- gentle about making fun of people interested in budgets.
Good, good call, good call. But, but the questions, uh, that Ms. Dean posed really pushed myself and the staff to better understand the, both her personal experience with running giant companies and construction companies, but also helping us better understand, um, how the community was thinking about our budget, right? And how that part of the community that was very conservative and fiscally conservative was looking and asking these tough questions, which allowed us to be better at what we did, right? When I got to Palm Beach, I had a board member who was really passionate about, um, about food and food quality and child hood, hood, um, childhood health. And so I made sure to, to help her engage in ways, uh, in the community at the state level with this sort of farm to school. And so she became an advocate of getting good fresh fruits and vegetables, right? So each of us wants to find a way to creatively feel like we're providing something to the greater good, but being careful not to get into the management piece, which is, I think we should do this, right? Because collectively as a body, you make decisions, okay? So knowing that individuals want to do that, we're gonna do a little activity and our group in the back is gonna be asked to do the same. So hopefully you've been paying attention. Yeah, okay. Uh, and so there's four quick questions. And this really goes into what we talked about when we did North, South, East and West. Um, very simple, right? We had directions, we thought some people were action oriented, some people wanted a lot of details and asked questions about the budget, wink, wink. Um, and then there were people who maybe wanted to get a chance to see the whole picture before they, before they acted, right? This is gonna go a little deeper for that. So what I want you to do is just take a few minutes. At this table, not at work, but at this table. Um, sorry, at this table. Um, I'm at my best when, when you work together as a team, as a governance team, when are you at your best? Is it when you have the information that you need? When you get a chance to understand how all of these things fit together before I make a decision? So at this team, I want you to answer these, these questions on your own. Um, I'm at my best when, and then I'm at my worst when, right? What does that mean at the governance table? When are you at your worst? Is it when you aren't prepared? Maybe you didn't get the information you needed in time. Maybe you got it and didn't have a chance to read it, right? And so now you feel unprepared. And then you can count on me too, and what I need from you is, okay? So as a collective, individually, right now, I want you to take about five minutes, jot down a couple of your thoughts and ideas about that, and then we're gonna work through that. All right, we'll give you about one more minute and then we're gonna do a quick turn and talk. So if you are at a table where both you and your partner have, uh, answered the four questions, uh, let's do a quick turn and talk, uh, with any of them. Hans, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Just fine. Hey, tell me the fourth one. I've got the other three and I've got answers, but, um, let me know what the fourth question was.
What I need from you is, meaning a, uh, board member, what I need from you is, maybe,
Got it.
You know, a little grace or, and you know, uh, I need a little more time or whatever.
Yep.
Right? Thanks.
I told the exercise.
She was a joke. But you know. But I, I know.
We're speculating.
I don't know why.
All right, I'll give you about thirty more seconds to wrap up. All right, let's bring it back. Let's bring it back together. So this is a little bit of a deeper conversation of the North, South, East, West. In fact, it was kind of cool hearing some of you referring back to your direction, um, which helps. I, um, I always find it fascinating that we tend, not all of us, but some of us, I in particular, tend to be able to tell you I'm at my worst when more than I can tell you when I'm at my best. And I don't know if it's just my frame of thinking, but some, I usually see more detail when I'm at my worst. And I think it's because we remember, uh, when we feel that way more than when we feel good. But let's start with the first one, which is I'm at my best when? Um, can we get someone at this table to give us a little bit of thought on that?
Sure. Gee and I both sat down that a version of where our best when we're informed of where we're going. Right, like the, the, the map out is clear, it's not requests that we don't understand or.
How does this fit together?
Yeah.
Right, coherence.
Yeah.
I see this a lot. I just did a, now, and a, a project in Albuquerque that had a hundred and twelve things that they had identified that they wanted to accomplish over the next five years.
Okay.
A hundred and twelve. And so I said, how is it possible that a system can focus on that many things, right? And so if we know where we're headed, how are those hundred and twelve things actually woven together to get to the school board's big strategic plan goals, right? And what we found was the vast majority, it was just ongoing operational work that didn't need to be in a strategic plan, right? It didn't align. So understanding where we're headed with alignment, coherence makes sense for people.
Um, I said, well, I've got opportunities to prepare, that information, and that's how it's processed.
Yep. Yeah, that's when you're at your best. You understand it, you get it, you've been able to ask questions. Hans, what about you?
So I think, um, I, I have a tendency to ask a couple of really detailed questions about what's being presented to see or to develop a level of comfort that the administration or that anyone presenting information has the depth of understanding necessary. Um, and then, you know, then that's it, right? I get, I start to get nervous if they can't answer the questions. I also think, um, I, I am really at my best when other board members or the administration are willing to challenge me specifically and put back and, and force me to kind of reassess or think about my own biases. I, I don't actually mind being, um, being challenged. I think that's a, a really healthy dynamic, um, looking at you, Jana. With love, of course.
Well, well, board man, board member looks, I said, uh, when the push and pull moves the team forward.
Yeah. I think that's a great way of seeing it.
About you specifically, like we push and pull in our one on ones, but I believe the push and the pull makes for a better product for the school system.
That's right.
So.
I agree.
And that's where that push and pull, I enjoy it to a degree because I like to know that the work is moving forward and it won't move forward if everything is just status quo.
That's right. But I also think part of that is grounded in some of the, the things we all agreed to, which is we're gonna be honest with one another. We're gonna come at this work because we care deeply about kids. We're trying to get to a, you know, to solve a problem as opposed to this is just my individual issue, right? This is for the good of the whole. And I've heard that a lot from, from you all as I've gotten to watch your board meetings, but also spend some time with you. Did you want to add to the first one?
I mean, I think we both shared, if we're talking about the best, like kind of understanding. And so I think you agree with inciting. Um, I ask a lot of questions because I want to understand the decision that I'm supporting. Um, or, you know, how we got to where we are now to know that this decision we're making is that one moving us forward or.
Yeah, and it's complicated because some of you have been on the board longer than others and have been able to contextualize the, the environment in which we're working. And, and some are having to catch up. Did you want to add anything to that?
I, just understanding what's being talked about, sometimes I feel like I can better respond and communicate when I'm educated on the subject. And if I'm not, kind of, I don't feel like I'm qualified, I guess, to, um, add to the discussion just because I don't know.
And guess what? That'll never change. Even though you're young right now, as we get older, there's still lots of things that happen in the school system that we need to bring experts in. You're gonna put in a new ERP system, you have cybersecurity issues. We can't afford to have full-time employees doing that. And sometimes we have to bring in experts. But it's the mindset, I think, that's healthy for good teams. How about folks in the back? Let's get, you need honestly.
Um, we actually both said we were at our best, um, when we had clear expectation and some time to process. Um, that was important, um, as well as being rested.
Yeah. And you know, that, that work-life balance, I think we're finally starting to challenge ourselves with the mental health concerns that we've all been grappling with since COVID. It brought to light this sort of unhealthy balance. Now, board members, I want you to hear that for a minute. So staff also want clarity. And so when the board hasn't been able to provide, coalesce, like haven't been able to coalesce around something solidly, it's hard for the staff then to go and execute on it, right? You see this, this, uh, interdependency that begins to exist between the board and the staff because they're executing on the vision, mission, core beliefs, right? Because you all represent the communities. What about when I'm at my worst? What, what's something that just sort of rubs you the wrong way? I'll go first. When I was superintendent, I was at my worst, um, when, uh, folks provided me too much unnecessary detail on things, right? Because your time is so limited, I need to be able to hire someone good. I need to be able to know enough about a topic, uh, to be able to be responsive to the school board, to the community, but I don't need to know every single detail, right? That's just, I'm putting it out there for myself. What are some things that we talked about here? Um, I'll start with you at, I'm at my worst when?
Um, when there's atmospheric chaos. So if it looks like the end goal is not clear, if we're discussing something or a topic and we don't really what the end goal is, or asking questions, and we don't know where we're going with it, to me, that makes me feel out of my times. I think, especially, and, um, I get very frustrated with that very quickly.
Yeah, so there's two things. There's people who create solutions, looking for problems to solve. And then there's people who really want to focus on identifying the problem, understanding the problem, and then creating or at least contributing to some discussion about what solution might actually help fix this problem, right? And we could be sometimes distracted by shining objects, whether they're state, you know, a local person who comes in and says, oh, I've got this great idea. I want to take all the inner-city kids to the theater, which sounds great, right? But it's not aligned to anything that the board has said is important and therefore it could become a distraction. Um, anybody else want to add to this notion of I'm at my worst when?
I, um, I'm, I'm thinking specifically of a couple, uh, uh, examples from previous administrations, but I, it, it drives me crazy when there are questions coming from the public that I think are good, reasonable questions. And we either don't engage or engage without empathy for the concerns that are coming from the community. And, and I think that being able to be empathetic, understanding, patient, and then responsive is, is sometimes a difficult balance to strike, but I think it's so necessary to, to keep the public at large comfortable with the work that we're doing.
Agreed. And I think one of the hardest things for people to do in this world or this work in particular is to say no. Now, I will tell you what I've learned over the years, we can't get to yes on every single thing that people bring to us. It's impossible. There are too many variables, we don't have enough money, right? But people also don't want to feel ignored and they want to be heard. And so maybe it's an outlier today, but if we're paying attention, we may see there's actually a trend there and we might need to go towards that thing that needs to be fixed. So I appreciate you talking about this notion of empathy. Um, let's go back to the staff and see if we can get someone to add something, I'm at my worst when.
I don't high jump it in. Um, for me, it's if I don't have the information and time to produce a quality product, quality is really, really important to me as well as like when people don't follow the rules or the rules are unclear to me, I'm very, like, I need to know what the expectations of those are.
Yeah. And, you know, sometimes we gotta be careful with this and not burn out our staff. Unfortunately, I texted you last night and what time was it at your home?
Um, it was dinner time.
It was dinner time and she, she gave me a great response. She said, it's dinner time, I'll hit you back in a little bit. Love that. Love that, right? I was just wanting to make sure I understood where I was going one last time, how many people, et cetera. That's what a good person does is tries to keep a little bit of that boundary, right? That's what a good person does is tries to keep a little bit of that boundary, right? Unfortunately, my guess is if it was Jima who texted you.
Oh, I think dinner time.
Oh, you do?
And are you fair if it means I'm going to finish the conversation, step away and take me right back, but.
But but here's the thing, we need to we need to understand that. I was sharing with you all, um, I call it making your thinking visible, right? So as superintendent, your job is to help them understand what it is you need to provide for this team, right? And they should come to you with work that's very close to a hundred percent, ninety, ninety-five percent. And the more you make your thinking visible, right? The more it's they can meet your needs and the more you can meet their needs. So you guys are all all very, very closely connected. Um, all right, you can count on me too. Uh, why don't I start with you? Count on me too.
Uh, we talked about I'm pretty good at providing feedback in a non-confrontational way. I think it goes to years of coaching high school kids and college kids and um it's probably also when I'm at my worst, when I when I bring humor to a situation that doesn't necessarily, you know, um I remember some emails during COVID where parents were very, how could I be laughing? Um, and Jane, I think wrote a meaningful response, like we can't laugh, what else are we going to do? Um, but I I think that's a strength, um, like I I tend to just be honest.
Yeah, there's there's nothing better than that. Um, a lot of times, you know, in our effort to sugarcoat or to keep the edges soft, we wind up wasting a lot of time and energy. Uh, people like authenticity, right? I always used to joke and say, be careful what questions you ask me because I will answer them and you may not like the answer, right? But that's just who I am and when I talk with people and work with them, they realize, hey, that's that's his style and that makes sense to me. Uh, did you want to add anything on? You can count on that too.
I put look at, read and think about everything we're given. If, you know, the staff is spending the time to produce the work, then I want to make sure that um I'm respecting that and that's when I think I'm you can count on me to ask questions because if I'm looking at it, I want to understand what it is.
That's right, that's right. Anybody want to add anything to that?
Said to consider equity now to.
Yeah, how's this going to impact not just the word student, but all students? And in this case, when it comes to equity, we need to be really persistent about, well, first of all, defining what that that means in in our community. Um, but also being really specifically calling that out, right? So how are our black boys doing uh in third grade? Have we seen an improvement in in growth and performance? And if not, what are we doing specifically to begin addressing that and providing? Loving, loving, good point. All right, let's go to the last one. What I need from you is, what do you need uh from your team? I'll ask you that. What I need from you is, you're thinking about this team, right? All people that are part of our central office, what do you need from them?
Um, I mean, one of my second one, and I wrote assumption of goodwill. Um, you know, sometimes I have to deal with some very difficult cases and, you know, I see input from legal, I go through a lot of research to make sure where the guidance that I'm giving is accurate. And so you want my team members to know that.
I'm coming from a good place.
Coming from a good place. We're dealing with a difficult situation, but I'm bringing you the best that I have.
Yeah, sometimes we can't get a hundred percent, right? We're getting as close as we can. What would you like to add?
I say the what I need from you is direction, guidance, support, clear expectations, feedback included to help me grow, encourage me, support.
Yeah, uh, y'all who work with me or for me know I balance pressure and support all the time, right? You need to have some accountability, stuff gets done when there's a little anxiety. Stuff does not get done when we hand out cupcakes and lollipops all day, right? There's a lot of happy people, but the kids aren't reading and re, you know, reaching their full potential because there needs to be that balance. But if you don't know the rules of the game, right? And you don't know what expectations we have, then it's hard for me to get close to meeting your your expectation. All right, board members, did you want to add anything to what I need from you is? What do you need from this team? Anything you want to add that we haven't heard?
I put to be aware of our goal as board members, um, that what we said, the the learning curve of being a parent or maybe advocate to whatever guys have control into a board member chair is a secret one. But to remember that, you know, the difference between our goal and the superintendent's.
Yeah. It it can, it can become tough and I have lived through that, you're you're living through that now. Um, we lived through that within superintendents, we know. Uh, board members really want to help. And sometimes they may even have a very deep understanding of a particular topic and push. But I think it goes back to what you mentioned, which is let's just be nice about it. Let's share our thoughts and ideas and then let's banter. I don't want to use, I'm paraphrasing for you, uh, Hans, but let's have that discussion, knowing that we're coming from a good place and we're trying to do what's best for the community at large. Yeah?
I would, I would, I'm sorry, go ahead, James.
No, not at all.
I would um I'd add to that, I I think that there's a a a bias to assume that the board's role is pretty one directional. We take input from the community or from our own perspectives and then bring it to the administration to kind of direct and push the administration and the and the system in a particular direction. But I I very much think that that also goes the other way. With we're working as a team and we've aligned around a direction and we know that it's going to take some work to get there and we have to bring the community along. It is also the board's role and it can be the role that we play to go push the community. And and using us for that um instead of the administration having to take the hit, I think is a is a is a is a powerful use of of our role.
Hundred percent, and I think of the five, almost five years I spent in Fulton, I saw the school board's community meetings as an unbelievable way to equip their most ardent supporters, right? The people who show up at these community meetings with topics that I was trying to get people to accept, i.e. the charter system, for example, right? Equipping the board with good information, they're going out there, they believe Ms. Bernath, or Ms. Bernath lived in the community, she'd been there for a long time. I was just a hired hand from Charlotte, North Carolina, right? When I got, when I got to Fulton. So my level of trust wasn't there yet until year two, year three, and people started saying, okay, this guy sounds like he understands what we're expecting. So great point, it's not one direction. Very good. All right, here's how I'm going to wrap it up and turn it over. So good teams never stop developing and investing in themselves and talking and communicating. Every time there's a new member of a team, the dynamics change and shift, right? I see that all the time. I also see places where where there's chaos in the boardroom, there's chaos in the classroom. Because the teachers that and the principals that report to this these folks also want stability. Superintendent is coming back for year two, awesome. Year three, things are going well, there's stability. There's not moving from one side of the road to the other and initiative fatigue. Does that make sense? And so part of that is investing in your development. This afternoon, I'll be spending a couple hours with your principals, talking with them about managing change, managing expectations. And how do you keep a team focused when we begin to start winning? What does that mean? We're starting to see improvements in some things, which is great. Do we keep pushing? Do we push too much and wear people out? Or have we celebrated too early and next year we see a dip, right? We don't want that. So we're investing in in the team this afternoon. Today, we're going to talk a little bit about how we continue to manage in an ethical manner. Uh, and I think I turn it over to Ms. Bernath at this point, okay? And I'll continue to participate in our conversation. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Thank you, Robert.
Give me a moment, please, so Hans can see.
Yes. Welcome back here again and ethics is, doesn't sound like a really exciting topic, but it's something we all need to pay attention to.
That's me.
All right.
And I'm taking a different tactic this time, I'm not giving you the PowerPoint. Uh, you are all at the summer conference and I'm borrowing from Dr. Don Hinton and you have a performance guide in your or program guide in your in your folder there. I also picked up an article that I thought might be of interest to you to read on your own time about ethics. And um we're going to have a lot there on today and myself as much as Robert's started us off in the right direction.
That button will move you forward.
Thank you. Some of these slides are similar, you have seen some of them before. So today, our focus is going to be about transparency and governance and you using ethics and the things that that you are responsible for, your code of ethics, your code of conduct, your um your your legal requirements of what you have to do. And there is a jump here, I can send this later, but these are copies of your um code of ethics, your conflict of interest and your nepotism um policy. And we're going to look at a few different examples here, well. All right, I'll stand over here. Oh, there it goes, okay. Okay, and again, um, state law requires that we train around these different domains. We're focusing, we're not going to do as much with strategic planning today. You can see they're slightly shaded. Ethics is going to be the main thing, but we're going to touch on most of these other items as well. So why do we have ethics? It's it's really, it's really civil civil um discourse with each other and allowing people to ensure equality with what they do and support how local governance teams work together effectively. We are required by Senate Bill eighty-four, which was passed ten years ago. It it has allowed for certain provisions with what we have to do. So board members, all boards have to adopt a local um code of ethics and conflict of interest policy. You can base it on what the state has developed, but you don't have to, you can go beyond, you could do something different. But at a minimum, you have to have what the state requires. You have a process where if one of you is not doing what you should, there you are your local police. There is no school board police out there that will direct any of you when you're doing something wrong. So you have to have a process when somebody, whether consciously or unconsciously, does something beyond what they should be doing as a board member, that you can go back with them and have a conversation and try to help realign what they're doing. Um, and then uh you also, the the state requires annual training hours that they set those hours. So right now, new board members fifteen, uh, seasoned board members nine. It also, oop, sorry, I went too fast. It also gives the governor the power to remove entire boards if they are doing something that impacts your ability to be accredited. If it if it endangers your accreditation. And thankfully, we haven't heard a lot of that in a while, but you have districts very nearby that have gone through that. And um it takes a long time to work back from something like that. Um, and if you're going to run for the Board of Education or if you're going to continue, you have to sign an affidavit, say that you understand and agree to the code of ethics, the conflict of interest, and that you will take the training hours that are required. So these are all state things I'm going the wrong way, sorry. Okay, so all the things that you do that you're the most focused on, they really all connect to focus on student outcomes. So each of these things are important and this is the work of the board. Following this, helping develop the strategic plan, aligning the goals to the board self evaluation and the superintendent evaluation, setting your norms and protocols, your conflict of interest policy, all of those really help focus on student achievement. So I want you to stop for a minute and think about these questions. And they may be in here. Okay, good. So Hans, you cannot see them, I guess, or I don't know if you can see us or see the slide. But the first question is, what does a school board member do and what is the purpose of the school board? How does the board?
I I can see this.
Okay, good.
I can see this, yeah.
So there are five questions here, if you'll take just a minute to reflect on those and we'll ask some questions. And staff, if you will also think about that and what your perception is of what the school board does and why what their work is is important. I know some of you are still writing, but let's go ahead and just quickly touch on what does a school board member do? What's the purpose of the school board? Anybody want to answer that? Give your thoughts on that.
I remember four things I said, uh, represent, make sure school district is behaving in the best interests of the children. oversee superintendent, oversee budget legal issues and serve as a quasi judicial hearing.
That is, that is it right there. That is it. Anybody want to add to that? Policy.
I think anything beyond that is outside of our scope. I mean, I I think that really does truly capture the full scope of of what we do.
Yes, and you and you enact all that through policy work. Um, how does the board work together as a team to make good decisions? What makes a good school board member? What's a trait? If you see somebody and they say that's a good school board member, what is something you think of that would be a trait of a good school board member? Well, as.
You know, one one thing I, one thing that that I have grown to appreciate uh and maybe didn't appreciate as much at first is that we really this is, we have a professional relationship that functions differently than other professional relationships. And you you really want to be deliberate about nurturing that those relationships, even with and perhaps especially with uh people with whom you might disagree. Just so that the the strength of those relationships are there for when you do have policy differences. But I think that that being able to maintain an empathetic professional understanding of your peers, even through disagreements, is is critical to prevent boards from degenerating into chaos.
I think you're absolutely right, developing those relationships. When I, when I first thought about becoming a school board member, I asked my sitting board member, you know, tell me about the job. And she says, oh, you're busy maybe a few days during one week each month. Well, it's hardly that, as we all know. And so much of that, because you're not seeing each other on a really regular basis, you know, once a month, twice a month, you'll get together. But outside of that, your lives may not intersect at all. So having the, making the time to build those relationships and understand and starting to develop trust in each other and it's all the exercises that you're doing to learn more about each other personally that help you in in the work that you do. And Robert, all the exercise that he brings to you, the compass activity that today lost on them. And it's all helping you learn more about yourself and your leadership styles and then how you interact with each other. And it gives you empathy to understand why somebody else makes a decision that's different from the way you might be thinking about it. So that's really critical. Why is interaction with the community important?
I mean, it's a way to find out what's, you know, what's not, what needs attention to not become an echo chamber of staff.
And the board is really the conduit for the community. You are the, you're the ones that that bring the concerns and the interests of the of the community in to the district and help disseminate. of the community in to the district and help disseminate back that information. Once a decision is made, the community isn't privy to all the details of what go into that. And so it's important for you to be able to find the way to help them become empathetic about what's being done within the district and develop that trust so that when you bring information to them, you're believable, they trust you, and you earn that trust. Um major challenges, what are some major challenges that you think about?
I mean, I here, friends and other school board members, that's not, it's not a uniquely school board policy, but we exist in a society where we just hear from five people and we take it as the gospel and act that uh and act that way as if we have God and ethics and morality behind us. And it is so hard to overcome that. Had a great conversation with our mayor, and she was just like, man, the community is furious about this. I just saw ten posts, and then she walks down the street and hears about fifty people who are like the exact opposite of the amplification of that. As a board member, if I only took the advice of the like five dads I walk to school with every morning, I could have a very different perspective than than kind of doing it publicly. And I I think that that is a huge challenge for for all.
I think that one of the challenges that I face is like, you know, there are certain things, you can't share everything. And you know, the assumptions that folks make in the community because sometimes they don't have all the information, but there are, you know, legal parameters around what we can say, and um that's difficult sometimes. Because, you know, what the, to be able to understand does not exactly, you know, the these assumptions that they're making.
Absolutely.
I think I mean, social media is just gasoline on the fire of everything, right? But I I wrote that we have a very active but under-informed community that does love clutching their pearls and has a tendency to fall back on on uh coded language with zero self-awareness about it. So you have to be so sometimes the most angry or most active individuals in the community can also be if you, if you, if you indexed off of that, we would end up in a very, very bad place.
Yes, yes. Carmen, what were you gonna say?
I think to be fair, I'm a bit James, and I think if we focus on a small, I go on my, or those things become future drivers. I mean, I've seen it time focus on one thing, and we're headed towards a board outcome, and then a social media post, and we're actually mobile. And we do, we think we're like, oh, this, this must be something that has to, we have to stop working out to a place to stay. And um I thought whatever is a playground, and sometimes, sometimes a decent policy comes out of it. If it's something that we need to stop, student outcome based work for with drafts and adults.
And one of the things about social media is that you know, if they haven't come to the, you know, emailed the board or spoken um that public, I don't know how much weight she gives to social media posts.
If this is the first point of contact particularly, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yes.
I think obviously y'all have so much more experience with a lot of what you're sharing in terms of these social media post contact improvement. But I I still think one of the greatest challenges is informing the community in a way that builds that believability and trust so that it isn't just a matter of, you know, like you said, James, certainly you can have, you know, a big group or, I mean, you've had experience with like this vocal group, but we do have a lot of people in this community who want to be active or want to support. And, you know, maybe sometimes silence is a great thing. I don't know. Um but to me, that's one of the challenges I'm seeing. Like, on one hand, it may mean we're doing things so well that all is good. On the other hand, I still feel like there's some room to communicate this in a way.
And some of the time, the people that you don't hear from don't know how to communicate. They don't know the proper way to get to things. So that's a challenge, too. Good points, everybody. Anybody else on this?
Things are getting more expensive. I just want to throw that out there. I think that's the biggest challenge that we'll actually face.
It's true. All across the board, from from food to construction supplies to retirement, everything. It's all impacting us. So for the last question, I want to ask Sophie this question, since you are the newest board member. Why did you decide to become a school board member? What made you want to apply to to be in this seat?
Um, I guess I just wanted to do representation. Um, I've said this before, I'll say it again. I think that a lot of the students and just people in my community don't know that the school board is there to you know, serve the students. I don't think that the students even know that. So it's kind of like this group that it's like the board. And the board makes his decisions. And it's like, oh, the board did this, oh, the board did that. And of course, it's for the students, but the students don't know that. I think having a student representative starts to change that dynamic.
I think you're right, and it and it certainly shows a commitment of this board to want to know what the students think and and get their input on things.
Yeah, I think ensuring that people know that the board is for the people um is really important. And I don't think people know that.
I think you're right. Anybody else? Representation.
Yeah. Yeah. For the teacher woman, I taught special ed, I got fed, and I always pick up
Well, and it's important to share with each other what your reasons are because now Tracy will know, oh, she taught special ed. Well, maybe she has a question about that, and she knows now she can go to you, or, you know, vice versa. Carmen is a a medical expert. If there's a medical issue, whether it's school related or not, I can, if I have something, I can go to Carmen and say, help me understand this. So each of you bring those different components to the table, and that's what makes you strong as a group. And learning to trust that when Tracy is a teacher, current teacher, she can be up on what the current things are and and sharing those those concepts with each other just builds your team, I think.
I want to uh just add that I think everyone one of the things that's very different about the school board is that you are representing students. So I've worked with lots of different elected officials. Uh whether it's mayors, city council, commissioners, all sorts of things. All of those other people represent adults. The person who actually put them in office. But besides Sophie, everyone else, and you all speak to the fact that you represent and you're here for children. That is something that is not lost or made. And specifically, the role within school board member versus any other elected official in the state of Georgia.
And that is true. You you are elected by one group to represent an entirely different group, but the people elected you, who elected you, think you, you do represent them, but you don't put their interests first. And it's sometimes difficult to make them understand that. So um again, you'll be faced with ethical issues, some more, you know, more um pronounced than others, but these are good questions to ask yourself as you face different issues. You know, does it make sense what what the issue that's coming up? Is anyone going to be hurt by the decisions that we make? Is it consistent with the values of our organization and with my own personal values? You all have a role model, somebody that you look up to, that you, you know, a mentor. Would they agree with the decisions that you make? And can it withstand public scrutiny? And, you know, many times decisions are made, and there's somebody that really always, there's always going to be somebody that's unhappy with your decision. But if you do it for the right reasons, it'll stand up for you. There we go. Okay, so this is actually the definition of ethics, is the principles of conduct governing an individual or group. So it seems pretty simple, but sometimes it can become complicated. The code of ethics is compliant, comprised of statements of ethical conduct for public officials and what you should adhere to yourself. And how you represent yourselves and your group. You put the needs of the organizations before your personal agendas. You adhere to the principles of right, conduct, high standards, and honesty in dealing with members of the group. And the reason you have this is because you represent the community. They look to you. You are um role models to them, whether or not you like it. You are always wearing your board hat. You, many people come to the board or to other elected positions and think they have power that they don't have. For the board in particular, you are only, you only have power when you're sitting together at a group, making decisions. But the community doesn't see it that way. So they they will come up to you and sometimes think that you have powers that you don't possess. And it's important that you know where your strengths are, know what you're not capable of doing, and that you can em- empathetically communicate that back to your constituents. The code of ethics helps provide those guidelines and tells tells the community what you expect of yourselves and what they should expect of you. And Georgia law requires that you have a code of ethics. Again, we talked a little bit on this before, but Senate Bill eighty-four requires that you adopt the code of ethics, that you um have a conflict of interest policy, that you have a process where there's a sanctioning process for you. If you know what that is, that should be part of your norms and protocols, that if somebody does not adhere to these things, then this is how, this is the next steps that you take, and that you continue with your training. Also, that um again, that the governor, hopefully this governor or the next one will not have to deal with those issues, but it's important to know that your behavior can certainly impact your district and can can cause a terrible downward spiraling spiraling effect if you're not aware of your behavior. You have to qualify, in in qualifying, you have to disclose if you have any close relatives working in the district. And um disclosing as a conflict of interest, sometimes that will um, it's something you can't help. My um cousin was already a teacher in the system when I became a school board member. She was promoted and was applying for a principalship. And she, the the superintendent came and he said, I'm going to recommend this person to be a principal. And I had disclosed to the board that this is my cousin, so I will not be voting on this matter. I'm going to recuse myself from this vote. And afterwards, I made a point to say to the community, I have a someone who I'm related to who has just been appointed to this position. I didn't want to appear to have any kind of sway over the vote, so I didn't take a vote. So it's important that if there is a conflict of interest, you disclose that, and you may never have to use it. Um if you you're um are with a company who might possibly do business with the district, that needs to be disclosed. You need to recuse yourself, but it doesn't mean that that company can't respond to a bid, and they could win the bid, but you just can't vote on it. So making sure that you're you're transparent about those issues is a very important thing to do. So usually conflicts of interest fall into two categories. Either your board members wanting to do business with the board, and in some small districts, if there is no other option, you know, you've got a roofing company, and you're the only roofing company in town, and there's not another roofing company for eighty miles. Well, you're allowed to bid on that. But um that's the exception rather than the rule. And then, again, making sure that you disclose any conflicts of interest with the community so that they understand and um you're not seen as being impartial. I mean, being being, you're seen as being impartial. So there are, there are several stories that I'm sure you've heard many of them about board members who have brought the district into public light in a less than favorable way, and you don't want to be in that, but they usually fall into a couple of different areas. Well, wait a minute, I skipped, sorry. People thinking they have power and responsibility that they don't have. And you'll see, it's all about me going going into a school and you know, as a new board member, and finally being able to say to the principal, you're doing this wrong. Or they, you know, my neighbor told me that you're being, this coach is being unfair. Um trying to do the things to to favor a board member, children, friends, that is unethical. Uh and then if somebody becomes too involved in the daily operations of the district, everybody has an area where you're you're more interested. For me, when I was a school board member, the thing I was most concerned about was to make sure that teachers got the training that they needed to to help our students. Somebody else, as Dr. Avosa mentioned, was focused on budget. Somebody else was on curriculum. Somebody else was on athletics. And it's one thing to have that interest, but it's another thing to insert yourself into that process. So that is certainly not, not a good place to be. And then executive session, if anything that is shared out in in executive session that's then shared outside is a clear violation of the code of ethics and could result in a lawsuit that could damage the district. So it's really important when you're having those closed conversations that you recognize the importance of them staying in executive session. Hiring someone, but making sure that you don't put undue pressure on the superintendent. You might have a great candidate. You might know somebody. You might get a resume from someone. It it's important to understand and talk with superintendent about what do I do if I get a resume? Do I tell them no? Do I know where they need to send it? Do I send it on to HR? Do I, what do I do with it? In order, and you don't have any influence on who gets hired, but it's important to know what the process is. And when the superintendent brings a recommendation, you have two choices. You vote it up, you vote it down. You don't vote it down and say, I think instead that you should hire Tracy here because I think she's going to be a much better CEO than Sophie is. You you can say yes or no, and if it's no, bring us somebody else. We've talked about this a little bit. You you live in a fishbowl. You are always a board member, and it's important to follow the code of ethics and code of conduct, no matter what you're doing, because like it or not, you're always a representative of the board, and it's important that when you're out there representing the community, that the community sees you in a good light, and that instills trust in what you're doing on the board. So now we'll take a pop quiz. Um I'm gonna, I didn't give, purposely didn't give you the um PowerPoint because the answers are on here, so I can provide that to Dr. Whitaker afterwards, but um we're just gonna give you an opportunity to think about these items, and I want the staff to think about these as well. Each local Board of Education must have an adopted code of, local code of ethics policy, which includes the model provided by the state Board of Education. Is that true or false?
It's true.
You're right. It is true. Um and like I said, you you don't have to um do anything beyond what the state provides, but you can if you'd like to. And it's important to know that if the state makes any changes, you have to change your code of ethics to correspond with that. Well, I didn't realize I went ahead. Well, now you know. If I hear by the grapevine that a teacher in our system is having an affair with another teacher, I should recommend them vote.
What do you think, Sophie?
False, but never. For what reasons? Why? Why would you not do this? Anybody?
Well, I mean, I, the the grapevine is a well-known trusted source of information, so um it's not possible that it would be wrong.
Exactly, exactly. Um, you know.
But when you say, it's also just a chain of demand thing that that's not, you shouldn't go in front of a teacher.
Here, that, that's not, you shouldn't go in front of a teacher, no matter how serious or silly the issue is, you should take it to the superintendent.
Take it to the superintendent, don't take it to the principal, don't take it to your neighbor, take it to the superintendent. Then let the superintendent investigate it, because it may be, it may be true, it may not be true, it may be a punishable offense, it may not be. But it's got to follow, as you said, the chain of command.
Let me, can I ask a quick question about this one?
Sure.
Is it even something that you would bring up? Like, it ju- it just feels like it falls so far outside of the range of, of. I, I mean, I, I don't know, maybe there's a fraternization policy or something in the schools, but I'm not aware of it. It just seems like if two consenting adults are doing something, it's really completely not at all. Something to engage on.
One of the things that we, we have nepotism, I believe, for a board, but we don't have a, a true nepotism policy. For staff. So, an affair between another teacher. Is one the department chair and one not?
Or the principal or assistant principal.
Yes, there, there are a lot of things that could potentially be something that needs to be addressed. And so when we listed the sample policies, one of the ones we are talking about is potentially nepotism. But in a smaller district, in a smaller community, I have to think about that as well. Because I've learned a lot of different people supervise a lot of people that are related to one another. So. But I would say this is something where dependent upon if one supervises another, probably is something that. Want, should be brought to my attention because you don't want favoritism at play.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm a hundred percent with, I'm, I'm a hundred percent on board if there is in any way a. Boss subordinate relationship, right? Like, so I, I fully understand that, but two teachers that are peers. I just, I, I would be very nervous that we're weighing in on from, I don't know. I would, I would be troubled if we had a policy that said. Teachers can't do what normal consenting adults can do. If there, if that relationship isn't in place, obviously, again, boss subordinate, I got it, but.
And there are some districts that have a policy that may keep. A married couple from working in the same building or working in a circumstance where one would end up being able to supervise the other. Or people that are dating, I mean, you know, teachers, you're in school all day, every day, who are you going to socialize with? The people in your building.
Exactly.
It's hard to get away from that, but the point in this is, if you hear something. Give it to the superintendent, let the superintendent make that determination and do that investigation. It's important, it's important not to let rumors lie, but it's important to make sure that they're investigated by the right person, which is the superintendent. Okay, it's okay to discuss personnel items while in executive session.
Yeah, I mean, that's, isn't, oh, okay. I can't tell if people are nodding or if I'm.
That's all right, that's all right, you're. So, but it's okay to discuss it as long as it is a. An executive session topic, so if it's, you know, employment evaluation or termination, if it's something else. Then, you know, some, a teacher wants to teach a new course. Well, that's not something you would discuss in executive session, so just keeping in mind what the, what the purpose is. Superintendent refuses to employ a person I consider best qualified to fill a vacancy in our district. If I can convince the rest of the board to go along, we can legally require the superintendent to employ the individual. False, yes. The superintendent is the sole person responsible for hiring anybody else, and again, you vote them up or down, but you don't make those decisions. You can bring names of qualified individuals, if they choose to apply, the superintendent can interview them, but it's. The superintendent's decision afterwards, and you take their recommendation. And if you don't, if you get involved in something like that, again, you could open yourselves up to a lawsuit, and you don't want to do that for the district. My spouse is a bus driver in my school district and is up for promotion to a supervisory position, I must recuse myself when the vote is taken on this action. Yes. So again, you don't want to provide any opportunity for the community to think that you're doing anything underhanded. Or you're getting favoritism for anybody in your family. During the board meeting, it is okay to ask members of the staff questions if I need more information about the topic being discussed. Here's the answer. Because the questions should really be directed to the superintendent. If you're asking points for clarification, like, I don't understand what you meant when you talked about this line item in the budget. Can you talk to me, tell us a little bit more about that, but if there's any kind of direction. It needs to go through the superintendent, and if the superintendent, you know, if somebody who's presenting, it's, it depends on what your. Norms and protocols would allow, if you're allowed to talk to staff when they're presenting at meetings, then by all means. But if it's a direction that comes afterwards, then it needs to go to the superintendent. After the board being, sure.
Confused about that.
Yeah.
So I think Hans brought up something in our last meeting, and maybe it was the work session about questions, so then. During the presentation of information from a staff member, it depends on whether we can ask questions. I'm confused, sorry.
That's all right, that's right. If, if someone is presenting, and it's your practice to address the person presenting.
Okay.
Then it's okay, but if you're, if something comes up before the budget.
Yeah.
And. The person is not presenting, you're just talking about the budget, you have a question, then it's up to the superintendent to say, let me get our CFO up here. To answer these questions, or, and the CFO may come up and say, you know what, I don't, I'm going to need to do some more investigative work. So then you would not say, when are you going to get back to us? You would say to the superintendent, can you, you know, can you see that we get this information by the next board meeting?
Yeah.
I think, I was gonna, I was gonna step in, I, I think there's, there's two, two things to keep in mind, I think, one. There is a different. Norm related to work sessions versus board meetings, and in general, even when we're asking questions. In a board meeting, they ought to be more directed to the superintendent. In the work session, it is, it is our norms to be, you know, have that back and forth and ask questions of the individual presenting. But when it starts to become a request for information or a request that is going to involve work. That always should go to the superintendent, not to the individual present.
Yes.
Yeah, so I want to add a little something, this is Robert, so, again, these are rules that need to be established, right? So in both of my districts, if the board members were asking for any information, it was shared with all board members, even though they didn't ask. Meaning the question is asked, and staff is taking the time to fulfill that question, then all that information should be shared with the rest of the team. It also allows you to do a little self policing, so if we've got fifteen, twenty requests coming from the same individual or on the same topic. It might signal that we need to do a separate workshop to get into the weeds because people have legitimate question and want responses. I do think, though, at all times, it should go through the superintendent, so if you have a question about something that was just presented. The superintendent then would look at the staff and say, I'd like, you know, she would give you some information, and she would say, hey, will CFO please come forward? And what I would tell staff, and this is your sort of thing, if you don't know the answer, say, I don't know the answer. We don't sort of say, well, we think it's about twenty-two percent, that is not what we want on the record. We want to be able to say, we, we need to get a little bit of, you know, data together, and sometimes that meant the CFO was back there doing it during the meeting. And was able to say, I figured it out, we have seventeen percent, so that makes sense?
And, and, but I don't know that we have norms about the work session. We have one, we have ones about board meeting, not necessarily the rise, such that I think is how we have, we just prefer. But, and I was thinking about that, was that question supposed to, I don't know, do you have norms about work, work session?
You can, but you know, if you're following the same general rules. Robert and I were just talking that when we had our work sessions or board retreats. It, the, the format was a lot looser, and it's okay to ask questions. But if you're going to ask a question that involves staff to direct their time to following up with something. Then it either needs to be something that everyone agrees on, or let the superintendent determine what that's going to be, because then they're going to have to decide, well. They're, you know, working on, do the audit, getting the audit stuff ready, do we really have time to investigate? This, and is it something that we can wait until later to do? And if, if, we should always assume that if one person asks a question, everybody wants the answer. And that they may want the answer in a different way, somebody might want the whole budget booked, somebody else might just send it to me electronically. But that's something that can be determined as questions come up.
I, I think the key, I will say here in city schools of Decatur, it is. Is it the ask of one board member, or is it the ask of the collective's board? Because resources, and I say resources as in time and person. Are very finite in the city schools of Decatur versus my two other districts where. I have a full data warehouse team, and they have analytics, and I have statisticians, and I have. You know, executive directors, directors, coordinators, like, all of those personnel aren't here. And that's something that has to be managed. Because the person working on the work is also the person working in the work. A visible example is. In every other district, there is a different person who runs all, everything you see in a board. There are multiple staff running the presentations, the audio, the who's online, who's this, who's that? It is never the C I L. But in our district. And we call him Inspector Gaddy. Because he is presenting to you meanwhile making sure the audio is correct, and the people can hear you online. And make sure the TV is turned the right way so you can see. And he's driving the slides, picking the presentation, all of the above, so the finite nature. Of a central office this size, the requests have to be managed, and the resources can.
Right, right, yes.
Question, why, I guess it's. Why would we need different norms for the work session versus the, I mean, I, I think the work session, it's people conversational based on the topic that. But what I think I'm hearing per se is that if we have a question specifically for our Dr. Booth. And if it's something that's not in the content of what we're given, then we need to direct that, not the question to. Dr. Whitaker and then decide how that gets washed out, but because it's more conversational, like, we're doing book studies. You have to say, could we, you ask Dr. Booth something, she would care there, but, so, and that's kind of the way the board knows to already written.
But you, but you can also set up at the beginning of, of your work sessions, again, if this is what your typical practice is. You can say, we're not going to use the formality of calling everybody by their last name, we're not going to use the formality, we're going to. We still want to have maintained order, so please raise your hand, but we want staff engaged, that's why they are here. So if staff has input, they can provide it, if you have a question and the staff is there, and it's okay with the superintendent. As part of this overall discussion, to ask a question, yeah.
I think the, my answer to your question is like, if we're discussing policy in its own work session, I'm under the impression that it's like, right, feedback. That's not a discussion, so I go back to the protest one, like, Jane and I were literally asking questions about what does it mean to be dangerous, right? And I wouldn't do that in a board, like, here's a policy, it's been discussed five times, let's vote on it, all in favor, say a, say no. In a work session, and it's like, I've never thought about the way the danger is subjective and can be enforced, and do we want to leave? That sort of hands to it, but, but to me, that's, I don't think we need different norms. I think we need an understanding of what is a good question, and what's a gotcha question, what's a question that's like. Oh, you know, I, I said true to the question for the record, because I thought, like.
So did I, whenever I saw it.
Yeah, when Lenita presents something, I think it's totally fine to say, what does that mean? Excel seven on your Excel, can you tell me more? I have no problem with a board member doing it. What I have a problem with is when someone's like, well, what about that statistic compares to this other statistic that I looked up that you have not presented on? That's making it about you, not about the presentation. The work session should, in honesty, flow the exact same way, though, right, like.
Yeah, but, yeah, but even if they go back and forth, like, we're worrying about policy, and then. In the end, I think it was Amanda, he was like, maybe I need to go pull a couple of other policies with this particular thought point. And see what I get, and then Dr. Whitaker was like, you know, that's a good idea, I, I want you to pull a couple of other policies. But it wasn't like Jane was like, I want this policy, this policy, this policy, I think maybe even in that context, that would really. And I don't know that we need, I, I, you know, I'm always feel more comfortable with the rules and. And.
That's a love chuckle.
Good, and so, you know, to say, you know. We, I just wanted to clarify that there aren't any norms for the work session, we're saying that the norm for the work session, that we have these limitations, there really aren't any norms. I would prefer to after the same norms, so that, you remember, still have, you know, a time constraint on the work session. And so that you just don't start getting down in the, in the week, although it's time to be focused on certain specific topics. I just feel like there should be some, some norms about, either we're going to follow the same norms or. You know, we follow the same norms, but, or policies, we have these limitations, I just feel like, so that we're all on the same page.
Well, then at least.
There, the, so, so I'm, I'm obviously approaching this from the, I, I love chaos and have never met a rule that I don't like breaking, so. The, I, what, I, I, I think what, harm in reference, when we were talking about the lunch policy. That debate, even though we were in the weeds, each of us were putting forward ideas for what we thought the policy ought to be. We did run long, we didn't end up at a consensus, but we gave Amanda an enormous amount of stuff to think about. That debate in public, where the community could hear us grappling with an issue. Where we didn't arrive at a consensus, but we moved the ball forward, that, I think that sort of thing is. Critically important for our community to see and hear, that not everything is prepackaged, and not everything comes out, and we all just vote without talking about it. But that we have real substantive debates where we don't actually know the answer, and we don't necessarily get there, but continue the conversation. That kind of transparency, I think, is precisely what. I mean, when Tracy's talking about the community wanting to see, you know, having a little bit more transparency about things, I think that's really what's meant. To, to understand that it's not all prepackaged, and I, and I thought, yeah, I mean, yeah, we can put. Boundaries around that sort of a thing, but I would be really concerned about any norm that impinged upon our ability to do that. I, I just wanted to put that forward, because I, I thought that debate specifically was an excellent example of public policy in the works.
Right, and I would just add that, that was a, that felt, that was a conversation between board members, what I, what I, what, don't want to happen is that. A staff member, as it looks like, get put on the hot seat, and we're just bam, 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 right.
But I, I, ask Amanda whether she felt like she was on the hot seat or not, with that, I, I mean, but I, I mean, I, I hear you, I, I do hear you. But I, I think it's okay for us to ask hard questions and have a policy conversation, as long as the hard questions are. Trying to move the policy forward, and as long as we have clear space. For not insisting on the answer being provided right then, that, that, that there is space to come back with the answer.
I would say what we're referencing is two things there. One. Creation of policy. Like I say, you guys have three things. That is the thing you do. Number one is create policy. And you're referencing the pre-work, not necessarily the work session. And so like the pre-work was definitely a lot of conversation and we know that nutrition policy was, were your words. Codified. Um, I think now you're talking about a work session, but, you know.
Okay.
But I mean, that's a good, that's a good point. It's all, it's all of them, right? I mean, like, so if, if we're talking about how we're going to have norms around the work session. Then we also are to some extent talking about how we have norms around the pre-work, right? I mean, and it is. We're, we're talking about norms for the way we engage in any of our public meetings.
I, I heard you say that it's important to give the staff the power and the knowledge to say, I don't know, I'll have to get back to you on that because that's, that's tough.
Yep.
On their boss and front of their boss's boss's questions. And I, I'm not wired to say, I don't know. I would just stand up there and take it, answer the questions. Good. Uh, but I'm rare and that's got to be frustrating. So I think just telling people like, yeah, you got some questions you weren't prepared for, that's okay. That's.
And sometimes it's good to even preface it by saying, I didn't ask this question in advance and I re- realize you may not have the answer tonight.
Yeah.
But can you tell me X, Y, Z? And can you get back to us as a group by a date certain? So that question doesn't go out there and fall in a black hole somewhere or just disappear. So that is important to find follow-ups. I have so many things here and I know we're already running out of town, time, and I'm just going to go. So you can't, you can't, um, just put something on the agenda and that's really more a gotcha than anything else. If you, if you don't let the superintendent and the board chair know ahead of time.
Can we clarify that, um, process even, uh, less, less.
Good. Right. I'm, I'm fast forwarding through some of these things. Again, a reminder, you ensure that, that the system is well-run, but you don't run the board, the schools yourselves. So we're going to look quickly at this case study and I'll skip the other stuff. I can't move Hans, but I'll read that top part. It says, the high school principal has announced her retirement effective at the end of the school year. A former principal of that school has let it be known to a board member that she would like to return to the job. She was very successful and extremely popular during her previous term as principal, both with teachers and the community. All of the board members feel very positive about the prospect of her employment. The board chair in particular is known to be especially excited about the possibility of her return. One board member has told her that she's a Q in for the job, prompting the former employee to resign her current position. The superintendent, on the other hand, feels that the school needs a person in the position that has worked in the area of instructional leading. In the work session, the superintendent realizes the board that he plan recommends someone else at the meeting take the place and will take place in three days. So. Seeing this. The board member who guaranteed the job to the was acting in the best interest of the board? No.
Yeah.
Board member should always base decisions on how staff members will react. No. Board members acting without the recommendation of the superintendent may employ the principal. No, they can't, you know, they can't guarantee anybody anything. There's no reason for board members to consider other candidates as they know the former principal's best for the job. False. And again, they have, they have an obligation to consider all candidates that are presented by the superintendent. But they can vote to accept or not. We've talked about that before. Board members may act as they wish because they are elected officials and they have immunity from lawsuits. That is a big false. Your name could be on there right as much as anybody else. Um, uh, just going through real quickly, here's one more. A board member runs into a neighbor at the grocery store. The neighbor tells the board member that her son attends the high school and plays football there. She goes on to say that she does not like that the football coach uses rough and sometimes profane language with the students, including her son during practice. The board member tells the neighbor that she will handle it. As the neighbor walks away, the board member uses her cell phone to dial up the coach. When he answers the phone, the board member tells the coach what she's been told and directs him to stop talking to students that way or he will be fired. Is this oversight or overstepping? Overstepping, but who, who has the ability to do that? Only the superintendent. Again, personnel questions to think about. What requirements exist under state law requesting, actually got follow-ups to this, I think. Yes. So they're required to have an annual performance evaluation and. Your job is to make sure that the superintendent is doing their job of providing the performance evaluation. Let me stand over here maybe. Again, they're pre- they're trained by appropriate personnel. It's not you as board members. Personnel file is confidential. That means you don't have the right to go in and look at it. You don't have any more right than anyone else. The, um, state board of ed provides model evaluation tools, the critiques and leaks and whatever else there are to, um. Identif- to, you know, evaluate personnel. And the local systems can use that state model. If you want to adopt, adapt that, you can. Who performs the evaluations? Superintendent assigns people to perform it. So department chairs, principals, um, building managers. And the superintendent has to be evaluated at least annually by you. That's the only evaluation that you do. Again, you're not entitled to see, the only superintendent's the only one. You can see the, um, instrument. If you're concerned that staff is not being appropriately evaluated. You can look at the instruments that are being used and make sure that they're covering everything and get justification from the superintendent on why this instrument is being used. But you don't have any more right than Joe Blow to come in and say, let me see Gina Whitaker's personnel file. I like this quote. You're, you are building consensus. You are, um, you're, you're not looking for it. You're helping to, to gather it together. I'm going to skip these. I will send a copy to Dr. Whitaker. I don't know how to get out of this, but I don't like to end it this way. There's so much more I want to talk to you about. But ethics, like I said, ethics, eh, ethics is a constant battle with decisions. Do you, you know, am I doing the right thing? Is it right for who I'm looking for? And it should weigh on your conscience when you, when you make decisions that impact others. There's a quote by Linda Fisher Thornton that says, you won't find ethical leadership in the rule books. It's in the deep commitment to good that drives our choices and transforms our organizations. So making sure that you're doing the right thing is, is part of your job. And if you ever have questions, I'm available, Robert's available, Emily's available, Dr. Whitaker's available. We're happy to, happy to work with you and I don't want to encroach any more of Dr. Lindbeck's time, so thank you for your time. You have an evaluation in there. I will send, um, Dr. Whitaker the copy of the PowerPoint so you can distribute to everybody. Thanks for your time.
The questions are right behind the wall. And I actually started at the kindergarten teacher. If anybody wants to stand up and stretch.
Oh, I need to share this, Mr. But it's too. It has less to do with the clicker than it's driving. It's very high resolution and display and it's just, and we made some audio changes to make it a broader pickup. Also, you don't have a whole lot of animations in your deck. You'll be just fine.
Okay.
Or stand wherever you would like to be, although I. So I'll slide this closer if it makes you feel better. But if you stand over there, then this, it's gonna seem. And he's got the slide there too. This, there's nothing. So this one. And then that. All set?
Yes.
Awesome.
And just some notes. Okay, um, I know that we have limited time. We're already over, so, um, let's see what we can do.
You ready to get started?
I'm ready to get started.
Dr. Whitaker, we're ready to get back. Oh, well now.
We'll wait till.
A lot of sitting. Usually sit this much during the day.
And you made one too, because I know you saw her so bad. Okay.
Okay, let me know if you can hear me. I'm doing my teacher voice right now. This is your, uh, annual training and you'll learn that who needs to be trained annually as we go forward with this. Okay, 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 I got it now. Okay. The agenda has been developed, um, based on what you wanted to know about charter systems and other things. Um, and we're doing it all through these topics. Uh, what does it mean to be a charter system or other? What is your contractual obligation? And how is governance distributed through city of Decatur schools? We're also going to look at innovative leadership. Uh, the innovative leadership on the part of the, of the entire district and as a board. Uh, what is broad flexibility? And what are examples of broad flexibility in other charter systems? We're going to start with charter systems, strategic waiver systems. There was some interest in that. As well as what are your contractual obligations? I'm going to keep going with this. Uh, got it. Okay, so as, as a charter system, I just wanted to lay a little foundation. You can innovate or view any kind of challenges just by looking at using time. Because there's never enough time, talent, because you've got talent within this district as well as your greater community. Uh, limit, resources, because they are limited as well. There's never enough money. And new partnerships and looking at these in a very, very different way in order to come up with solutions to challenges. And when change is needed, you can think as broadly and creatively as you can. And you may come up with something and it could be something that, you know, is pretty obvious, you know, straightforward, it's obvious. Or it could be something so new and different. It might be something you've never thought of before. But either way, you can do things that you could not do before and come up with innovative things to do. Uh, so what is a charter system? A little history here. It was charter systems came from, uh, legislation, uh, the two thousand and seven charter, uh, charter, um, system act. All right. And it was written by Senator Dan Weber, who is now the executive director of the Charter System Foundation. And he did so on behalf of, uh, Lieutenant Governor Casey Kegel at the time, who had this vision for charter systems as well as college and career academies. In two thousand and eight, the first four, uh, pioneers of charter systems took place. And that was City of Decatur, Marietta City, Gainesville City and Warren County. And we were literally building the airplane as it was flying down the runway. Because no one had ever, ever done it before. Bylaws, everything had to be done. There are now forty-eight charter systems. Six of them, uh, are from, uh, the strategic waiver school system conversions. Um, and you're not going to hear that whole long strategic blah, blah, blah. You, I'm going to call them Swiss systems. Actually, what you have is a contractual agreement with the state board of education, you, the board. Um, in order to be a charter system. The state, uh, agrees to give you broad flexibility from almost all of the state rules and regulations. The state, uh, education law, um, is, um. Called Title twenty, okay? And I used to carry around the hard copy of Title twenty. It was this thick. And I would have to hold my arm, my, and my hand under my arm because it was so heavy. It was just full of useless rules and regulations that tied our hands and doing what is best for all students. And so they did that and they gave us a little bit of funding. Now, when, um, City of Decatur and Marietta were writing their applications. There was never one word that any funding would come with this. Not at the beginning. All we wanted to do is have the flexibility to do what was right. But we do get appropriations from the state. Uh, it comes in your, in your Q V E allotment. And it is approved each year by the legislature. They approve the appropriation. So it's very good to stay close to your legislators and let them know the great work you are doing. Local Board of Education agrees to local governance, all right? To the structure, to the requirements, um, and that is critical. Annual training needs to take place. For boards of education, superintendents, principals, local governance teams. Um, and key district staff. So it's very important that curriculum people and finance people and a lot of different people, any, anything that touches the work. That goes on in this district really needs to understand what a charter system is. Use of broad flexibility is given to you to implement innovations that increase student achievement. That is what you're supposed to be doing. And so you can also have those in- innovations come. not just from your local governance teams, but at the district level as well. The bottom line of all of this is increased student performance. Work. Okay. Back. Uh oh. Okay. They break it. No, it's back. Okay. Yeah.
Give me a second to get you back up. Is this where you're trying to be?
Yes. Hold on, I'll make up that. Yeah. One, now keep going. Oh. Oh. Okay, alright. So what is a charter system? We don't have time. You need to read through all of this. I got this right from the Georgia Department of Education, but what is a Swiss district? I'm on the next side of encapsulated difference because that's really what this is about. Okay. So how do they differ? And my big question out there was why are there so few charter systems? There are a hundred and thirty Swiss districts. There are forty-eight charter systems. And there are two status quo, which means they have no flexibility at all. But there is a difference. The difference is, is that as a charter system, you have school-level governance. And for most of the districts, they really don't want to deal with it. They don't really understand how valuable it can be to the district. You have great, you have your SLTs here. You have an SCLT, which is an additional, additional add-on. It really is a value added to the amount of local governance that you provide here in your district. Because what happens is there is an SLT member and each of your, and one member from each of your SLTs meets with your superintendent and provides additional feedback on important things, curriculum, instruction, budget. These are important. And it really says a lot about your district's commitment to local governance. Funding. You do receive funding, as we said, through your QBE funding. And from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-five, this City of Decatur Schools has received over seven point five million dollars. That was to be used for innovation over the years. This current year, your allotment was six hundred and, over six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to be used for innovating and to increase student achievement. And performance overall. The Swiss districts receive no funding. They have no required school governance. They have no additional funding. And importantly is you have broad flexibility from all of these rules and regulations of the state, almost all of them. You waive health safety, but you waive all. Swiss districts have to request specific things that they want waived. And responsible for everything else in terms of following those guidelines and those laws. So it's, there's a very big difference between having almost all of Title 20 and having those you request. They also are, they get their goals and they're monitored by the governor of students' achievement. And they're the ones that make and break them in the end if they don't do anything. What if your contractual commitments is not followed and fulfilled? Your contract very, very clearly outlines the steps and the consequences if you don't, on pages eleven through fourteen of your contract. There are a range of consequences, interventions to termination. Recent changes in renewals have been interesting. Many, many charter systems just sort of were out doing what they were doing. They would send in their annual reports. And there was very little follow-up on what was actually being done in terms of how much governance was actually taking place and whatnot. How many innovations were really innovations? And so within probably the last four years, we've had two districts that had interventions. They only had one year renewals. And at the end of the one year, if they did not straighten everything out and get everything the way it's supposed to be contractually, then they would not get their, they are the four years. If they did, then they did. The Charter System Foundation provides ongoing support and training that does minimize the risk of these things happening. They troubleshoot sometimes. They minimize the possibility of those consequences. And they help remediate issues before they even get to that point to assure that you have charter renewal, which is very, very critical. So what is broad flexibility? To me, that is the fun part of being a charter system. You make things happen for the right reasons. What are examples of broad flexibility in other charter systems? So what is broad flexibility? Let's look clearly at that. It's intended to be used in designing and implementing innovations that will advance student achievement and support your district's strategic plan and school improvement plans. So that's what governance teams are supposed to be looking at as well. What laws are included in broad flexibility? Everything else in Title 20 and State Board of Education rules and regulations, some Department of Education things. Most common uses, however, are your instructional time and how it's used, school day and year, how they're structured, how a school is staffed and staffed, including certification, compensation models, and Dr. Vosa and I engaged in a couple of those journeys. And class size, federal, state, and local funds you use to support the school improvement plans with consolidating funds. How instruction is delivered, who delivers it, and where it's delivered. That's all up. Promotion, retention, how support services are revised, provided rather, and what you can teach in addition to the Georgia standards. Okay. Okay. Alright, what's not included? Anything feral. You may not touch anything feral. And if you look very quickly, do a quick scan up into the red, there's nothing there that you would choose to waive or should be waived. The EIP requirements were legislated a few years ago, about three years ago, four years ago. And we lost the ability to be flexible with those. And now they've legislated literacy. So they made, they've done certain required screeners and materials and structure and philosophy and all of that. But there still may be some flexibility as this rolls out and even in terms of scheduling and such. We'll have to see. Broad facts, there's facts and myths. So a charter system does not have to ask the state to use flexibility or waivers or anything. You own that. It's in your contract. You just do it. Use of flexibility does not have to look the same in all districts and in all schools within your district. A charter system does need to align the use of flexibility and waivers with your strategic plan and school improvement plans. Flexibility should be used to implement innovations that support the overall improvement of student achievement. School governance teams should have the input into the development and implementation of innovations. Once again, to support school improvement. And that includes not just academics, but climate. School culture is important as well. A charter system can exercise its use of waivers at any time. It doesn't have to be just a set time, beginning of the year, the end of the year, whatever. Things happen in the school district. Think about Katrina, when hundreds of children showed up in your school. Same, so let's keep going here. Okay, use of flex, hold on, we'll come back to that. Use of flexibility, some things to keep in mind. No two charter systems are alike. They differ by size, by wealth, by region, by demographics. But a lot of their challenges are the same or similar. And as you view slides that I'm going to show you of what's happening in other districts, keep in mind, there might be a germ of something in there that might work for your governance teams. As you view the slides, it's about student need and that all students mean all students and no excuses. You don't have to have all these excuses. Find out what you need to do to have a solution. You look at time, talent, limited resources, and partnerships. You use these to innovate challenges and solve problems that you have and meet your strategic goals. Not all innovations require waivers or flexibility. It's just the way it's always been done. And that, that you just need to change. We had the Marietta difference forever until we became a charter system. Anyway, there's also a flexibility in action document that your superintendent has and can share with you. Let's see what else. Okay, now the fun begins, okay? This is Carrollton City Schools. We couldn't figure out how to get the name on this particular slide. But this is just to set you up on something. And it is about a district, a highly diverse district, that wanted to be sure children were reading by the time they reached the third grade. They were ready to read, okay? And so what they did is they identified the lowest five percent of kindergarten students. And they tapped them to be in a transition program through grades one and two. And the results of this program, I'm not going to go into all the details, you'll have a copy of this, I'm sure. And so they are receiving between one and a half and two years improvement in students' reading. And they are now on track for third grade. There are a lot of exciting things you can do. Town and city schools had a challenge. Everything starts with a challenge and you have to make the solution. The challenge was the students were showing up for pre-K, not being ready for pre-K. They had no vocabulary. They had no numeracy and literacy skills whatsoever. And they had no experiences. They took an old school bus. They turned it into a classroom inside. They put their teacher pathway students on there. Those students were the ones who were the early learning pathway. They put the students on there on the bus. They taught the children. And they also wrote the lesson plans. And they went to a federal housing area and also to a daycare that took care of these children ages zero through three. And they began to educate them. Great results on that. They've been doing it now probably for about seven years, I think. Okay, this is another one. Dublin City Schools wanted to get into the community earlier, get to the younger children, decided they were going to bring a special ed teacher, regular ed teacher, counselor, all their occupational therapists, physical therapists, nurse. And they were going to go to a place where they could get all of these moms and children and have them, children screened for early child find and educate their parents at the same time. They did it on a Saturday. And what flexibility did they use? They let the teachers stay home on Wednesday. They let all the staff stay home on Wednesday. Flex the schedule. Highly successful. And they have an increase in their pre-K because of it. Lumpkin County Schools, they just wanted to make sure their kids, after they gave them a great education, were ready to get out and go to college, work, military, and know how to take care of themselves. They came up with something called Adulting Day, a full day in the high school for seniors in conjunction with the CTA program, experts in the community. These kids learned how to change tires, cook, sew, make repairs. Highly successful. Local governance team was involved. They even volunteered. There are links that show you like a how-to. These links are not live in the presentation, but if anybody ever needs them, I have them. And I think Amanda may have them too. Yes, she does. Okay. Okay. Clark County School District. This is about one school in Clark County, an elementary school. It's about the work that a local governance team can do. And this local governance team was doing what they were supposed to be doing. They looked at the data. They looked at this school climate surveys and saw that from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, the students really felt tremendously in two areas. One was that they had no focus, no motivation. And the other one is that they felt less valuable about themselves. So the governance team decided they were going to do something about it, and they did. Now, you all are going to get copies of this so they can read through them. But they did an amazing job. They owned it and they did something no other ever did than I knew of. They created a standing committee that had to appear on every, as every governance team agenda in the future. So it would not stop, that it would always be consistent. So, okay, Hart County. They wanted effective CTA instructors that had industry experience. They wanted real experts in their field. So, and it could be used for different certification areas. But what they did is they said, you know, I'm going to waive, we're going to waive our requirements, certification requirements. As a result, they have, just here's a, for instance, they have a former lawyer, judge, and police officer instructing classes within the law and public service and all these other things. They have a former chef who is teaching culinary arts. And there's one under there for some reason you don't see, but it is an important one. It is a certified, a certified neurologist. a certified, a certified nurse who is overseeing their health, their health pathway. And because it is certified nurse, fully certified, those students can get technical college credit. And they can graduate with their CMA, which is really, really good. See what else we're doing. That's just more information about that. Oh, this one is, this one's good too. Petusa County. They wanted apprenticeships for their students, paid apprenticeships for their students. But sad fact of the matter was, the students had no transportation there. And they couldn't give them the transportation to all places all over. It's too spread out. So what they did is they brought it in-house and they found a way to do that. They have paid interns with technology and they then a few years later started one for the teacher pathway. Can read how they did that. Because it did require flexibility. Okay. Okay. Union County, then when there was Union Counties? Tennessee border, okay? And so they wanted, they knew there was a healthcare shortage up in that area. So what they wanted to do was use a STEM model in order to teach the healthcare pathway. So what they ended up doing was you, they waived seat time of the amount of time they spent in one particular class or another to provide multiple academic courses blended with the CTAe courses in their college and career cabinet. So they were able to do that. And they had great results from that, on behalf of their students and their healthcare system. Okay. Union County had a different one also. Had to do with government and public administration. And once again, they blended courses in order to make that happen. To middle school challenge, anyone ever known middle school that didn't have challenge? I was a principal, I was in middle school at one time. Anyway, they, they knew the schedule was just not working and they had no time to teach everything they needed to teach. Like, you know, a day for career exploration. And that's what they decided to do. They were just gonna take a whole day and give them a day of career exploration. They can do that. They could do that with anything. They could do this three, four times a year if they chose to do so. They could do it with science, they could do it integrating arts and, and language and whatever. But, but if you look at the bottom of this slide, you see all those numbers? Those are the codes that control the ability so that you couldn't do it before. Okay, so please, okay. All right, so remember, no excuses. Every student focused, all students mean all, results matter. One thing we do a lot of in public education is we do a lot of things that sound good sometimes and feel good because we're doing it. But are the results there? And we know the results these students need in order to be successful. And trust. Now, you know how many times I heard the word trust today from Dr. Avosa? I heard it from right, I'm drawing a blank at this point, right? Right. And so, but trust is important. It's tru- it's the trust you have with each other as board members. It's the trust you have in your superintendent. Superintendent can turn around and say it's the trust she has to have in all of the workers here and in, in the community. You have need the trust of the community, all of you. So, so how can you use these differently? You've heard it before, you'll hear it again. Look at those things and make it work. And it's probably no time left for questions, so I'll be here.
All right, any questions?
You go first.
So, being a charter school or a charter system, you receive extra funding. You can waive things and the governance is more flexible. What is preventing like a Swiss district from switching to being a charter system? Because it seems like it, it's just a better deal overall.
Well, we have forty-eight charter systems and six of those forty-eight were Swiss conversions. They, they did see the difference. I think they also saw that there's nothing really scary about school level governance. I mean, it's a wonderful thing, quite honestly. And governance team members can go out there and become best advocates. Because they're educated, yes.
Yeah, I didn't think about this before, so I don't know if we can get the info now, but since we do broad flexibility, I was reading, I think the smaller elementary class. Do we waive size requirements here, you can tell?
Because of the broad flexibility, you don't have to say we'll waive the class size. We just don't have. We actually have a school allotment guideline which actually says how many students you are allotted. And so, and as far as the class limits, we don't have to waive it because we have broad flexibility.
Yeah, and, and there were, there were things that we, we all waived very, very quickly. And that had to do with when, if you were, the max in your kindergarten, let's say was eighteen. If a student moved in in November, you were supposed, and, and you went over, you were supposed to open a whole new classroom. As board members, how expensive and disruptive is that? When you then are moving all these children, kindergarten children around different classrooms. These things made no sense.
So a prime example would be, say in a high school. If the class doesn't make, if it's not at a funding side, so you have to go over. Because if you don't go over, you're, you won't, you'll lose funding, correct? So those are the sorts of things that with broad flexibility, you are, you go over what would be a traditional size because if you split it, you're now below funded, correct? And you've lost all the funding in that class, in both sections, yeah?
And then, do we do the flexibility for certification too? So, I, I think we're a confused in, like a Swiss school, right? Has to ask for it, but because we have broad flexibility, we just get to do it. Is that?
Right, yeah, yeah.
So do our teachers have to be certified? Or, I mean, I can follow up with that.
Yeah, so when it comes to certification, say for example, a teacher in a CTA, that's right. Their teachers in a CTA pathway. They can be learning and gaining their certification, but you can be, you know, someone who is a welder. And they weld, they now teach weld. Because of the broad flexibility to the charters.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's exciting, it's exciting work, I think. And because you can make a good difference with it.
Yes.
No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So as a charter system, we should receive training from a one-year basis from the Charter System Foundation. Who is, not that we need that, but but it's just, it should be, you're, just like I suppose that's only about a panel on the end of the list. We can have a ritual routine.
Ritual and routine of nourishment. So let's, let's do that and we'll come back together and get started and walk free back.
I think it follows us. I think that's what it is.
Hey Hans, we're gonna get going a little bit sooner, so come on back if you can.
I'm here.
Awesome. Good afternoon, everyone. Hans, I'm gonna send you a link to the scavenger hunt we're about to undertake. It's gonna come to you in the Zoom chat. One second, everyone. We'll try that again. Good afternoon. Over the next hour or so, I along with Deputy Superintendent Newton Scott and Assistant Superintendent Burton, are gonna talk with you a little bit about some student performance data. Let's talk about data consistently over the last year and two months since off the record jointlets. We're going to show you today in greater detail some of the public facing dashboards that I gave you briefly to give on last week at the board meeting. With the intent being that you have some hands on time to kind of push the envelope, see what data is there at your disposal, but also available to our constituents. We've looked at our web activity since the last board meeting. We've had about a hundred visitors to that data back four page, you know, granted. I'm probably half of them. But we, but also we have
Probably a quarter. Just yesterday, we were
But here, but here's another, here's a data touchdown. Each one of the, right now we've got three pages of, a landing page and two business. Every one of them has a link for a feedback form. And we do have a, we got one submission as of last night. From a constituent saying, here's what works, here that doesn't work, here's what I'd love to see next. And that's great. And we'll see a heads up about our public facing dashboards go out in Friday's Superintendent newsletter. So we're gonna start off with this kind of working lunchtime doing a stabbing discussion. I will do a deeper walk through to show you all the public facing dashboards. And then gonna ask you all to do some work, working, that Tracy do with my work and associate because we're from both states here. But just want to see, can you find answers to these questions? And sat in the back, you've got copies of these too. After we do a look at our public facing dashboards, which are primarily focused on GMAX, which is our Georgia Milestones, our summative assessments at the end of the school year. And for some high school courses at the end of the course. We got Georgia Milestones and CCRPI. I'm gonna do a couple of snapshots of our map data, our map dashboard, we don't yet have out there in public. And the dashboard that we do have in progress. It's a little slow, it's trying to do too much. But I do want to show you a couple of snapshots from that data to tee you up for the conversation with Ms. Burton about early childhood. And right against the early childhood. Ms. Burton then is gonna look at the other inspection, popular with AP and IB. I'm gonna tease for you what we're working on in terms of API input. Will not be a deep dive, but I want you to see that we're working on it. We'll echo some of the things that we already have available, we have CPOG. And then Ms. Newton Scott's gonna kind of tie things up with big rocks and big ones. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, cool, thumbs up, I saw that. So I want to start off with, and forgive me if it aligns, so I can sit and reach. I want to show you, and Hans, you should see the CSD webpage. I want to show you all how you can find the dashboard. And your computers are all teed up to the CSD district website, so you can find them on your own. You can go to csdcater.net slash data or from our district, click on district data. And we land here on our two dashboards. What I'd like you pleased to do, class, is once you get to this data dashboard view, give me a thumbs up. Thank you, Dr. Johnson Davis. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you. So a thumbs up for you, James? All right. Dr. Salt, does it come up for you? Once you land on the district webpage, you can go to cover over our districts and you can go to district data. All good? Okay, why don't you take a look please at the front and back scavenger hunt sheet that you all have? The front page primarily focuses on end of grade assessments. And the back page, with the exception of a CCRPI question, mostly focuses on our end of course assessments. From our data dashboard page, I'm gonna click on GMAX, I'm gonna give you a little bit of a tour of it and then set you loose to go answer some questions. Sound good? Okay. So here's our GMAX dashboard. I want to point out for you that one of the things we've tried to, and the we is, you all heard a shout out for Anthony Colbert last week. A lot of credit also to Alexis Glenn, our Director of Assessment and Accountability. Those two staff have been really in, I didn't even know what the best metaphor is, in the weeds, in the deep on it. It's been a priority not only to bring this data going back several years, but also to signpost as clearly as possible for our families, for our staff, for our prospective constituents, what it is they're actually looking at. You know, the, the initialisms and acronyms of our industry can be overwhelming. So we've spelled out what GMAX is, spelled out what end of course, end of grade. We're so used to abbreviating that, we wanna pause and step back and say, here's what these actually are. Here's the difference between an EOG and an EOC. From this dashboard, you'll see EOG milestones is our default view. EOG is our third through eighth grade at the end of the school year in certain content areas. This is where you'll want to be for the first four questions or so. It's a quick toggle right up here on the right to go to the end of course. Because there are a few questions on the backside that get into end of course. Whether you're looking at EOG or EOC, there are filters on the left. So we only have a high school, so I'm gonna go back to EOG where it makes a little bit more of a difference. We can click on a particular school to differentiate between, say, Tally Fifth Avenue Beacon Hill Performance or down below a grade band. There's a question that asks you to drill in specifically on fifth grade and eighth grade, for example. So you click on one of these grade bands and you see a little animation, it tightens up because we've zoomed in on that grade band. The other things gray out. Click it again and it zooms back out. If you're ever wanting to go back to the original view, no filters, no nothing being taken away whatsoever, the magic reset button is down here toward the bottom right. You hover, and not sure what a button does, just hover over it, it'll tell you what to do. But reset view at the bottom right is the third icon over that removes any of the filters that are applied. We see here at the top, physically, school year twenty-four, here's how well we, how many students performed proficient or distinguished. And for most of these, you hover over and you get a little bit more information. For example, how many tests were taken? Will also show the percent, percentage or percentage points, I'm not sure in the moment. What the difference is over the previous year. If we move down further, we see the trend. We didn't want to clutter every little bullet point up here with numbers because as time goes on, we might squeeze in more overlapping text. But if you hover over any one of these bullet points, you'll see the proficient distinguished rate. Want to draw out for your attention math, as you've heard a few times, we don't yet have last year's math, GMAX supports yet. We anticipate them in fall, we've heard September, we've heard October, we will have them hopefully at least in the fall, wherever in fall that lands. And where we really start to see some of And where we really start to see some of our performance truths is when we come down to the very bottom, where we see a breakdown in the aggregate of our distinguished proficient developing learners. But if you hover over any of these bars, we see it broken down by race and we see it broken down by gender. Those are not the only dimensions that are significant to us. We all realize that our students were economically disadvantaged. It's a critical point for us to distinguish on. We don't have that published out here yet. For now, we can deliver on race and gender. Makes sense so far?
Yeah.
Before I ask you to take a look and work semi-independently except for this pair over here, what questions do you have about working your way around?
So when you're looking at this segregated data by demographics.
Yes, ma'am.
I am hard to assume that is when either or, so I'm looking at, when I'm hovering over the same bar you were given, I see female, female, that's female, non-Pacific Islander and then female and then black, non-Hispanic.
Yes, where they. Where they, where they overlap. Yeah, you're reading it exactly right, ma'am. Yep, that's it. And we have this, we have this right now displayed, most recent year. It would be great to go back and see how do we, to break this down in previous years, we don't have that yet. But this is our most recent performance reality for our students and our ability to deliver for our students. I'll go back just a little bit because there is that one question on CCRPI, what trends you see there? CCRPI is pretty interesting. One, we don't have our 2024 CCRPI data yet. They are like us, waiting for our map performance data and they can't calculate these dimensions until that is delivered. But what we have pulled together here is at the high level by grade band, how we are doing in each of these four quadrants. You'll probably notice closing the gaps and progress, there is kind of empty texts. There's no number in terms of versus previous year. And when you hover over, there's an explanation for why it's blank. There was an exception granted for 2022. There is no 2022 data to compare against for 2023. So we know absence of information can be a little jarring. We try to signpost it here, it becomes a non-issue once we get our 2024 data in. As with the EOC, EOG, we can drill in by grade band, elementary, and even down to individual schools when we're looking at our elementaries. Progress is a dimension generally that's not, generally not going to show up for our elementary schools, at least of late, because they aren't administering the third grade GMAx. They don't have a progress component to compare against. You will see that there is an exception for Claremont several years ago, and that has more to do with Claremont's participation in the access testing, which is a component of CCRPI, particularly in those years when it still had third grade on premises. That makes sense? Okay. Are you ready to take about ten minutes to do some semi-independent work and try to drill in and find some answers? And then we can do some review together? Okay. Work on your scavenger hunt, continue your lunch, and let's come back together at five after one. Teaching that's gonna be a race. So we can check your work on the first one to make sure we're all right.
Uh, yes, I'm done.
James is upset, but you might get his sticker.
Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll go back and do it again if I need to. The my slight issue is that I'm not able to fill out the form. Uh, because it doesn't, it's not unlocked for me, but I, I went through and actually found all the data. I'll just have to be doing it live if you ask me questions.
All right. Well, we, we got you. Thank you. Thank you, Hans. Sorry, I may, you may read only access here, right? You all, you all feel comfortable kind of checking in the cover to see if we all landed on the same page?
I'll say.
So remember, so what, that kind of day, is a first under question, answer the number four content area came up? But what you just brought up, James, like that's a natural part of the whole bunch. Here's, here's our, it's aggregate level of performance. But it's that high level of performance.
We get the subgroup stuff for each year or just 2021?
So right, right now, Tracy, it's for the most recent, it's just, it's the most recent, the most recent year. Can we check in on what numbers came up for folks and see what our experience is using this viz? And I want to start off with, let's just do a fist to five. So board members, student board members, if you are with a constituent and someone says, hey, I have a wondering about our most recent GMAx performance. Can you walk me through how well we have done? Fist is no idea, and I'm not even sure where to find the data. Five is I feel fully empowered to sit with that constituent and break figures down for them and start to tell our student outcome story. Where do you all feel with this resource right now? And Hans, we don't see it. Tracy's a four, James is a five, Jana? Yeah, fist three from, from Dr. Johnson Davis, four, wavy four from Dr. Sultan. Hans, how do you feel? Fist of five?
I'm a five.
Well, that's all right. Um, cool. Glad, glad to hear it. We're still working on it. There's more we want to put up there, but we'll take, we'll take fours and fives, and three in there. Just to kind of double check though, like, so let's, let's double check that understanding, right? Because if we got different figures trying to find the same answers, that's some feedback that we need to take back to our team to either educate or better signpost within this particular tool. So Sophie, twenty, you mind if I cold call folks? All right. Sophie, question number one, twenty nineteen percent of students proficient and distinguished in ELA, the very top right corner, what figure did you get? Seventy-one point five percent? Does that, does that jive with everyone else's? Yeah, I think I saw everyone else got the same answers to that first one. It's pretty, pretty top level. What about taking a look at our fifth grade proficiency on ELA, the second one? I did see some, people had different answers to that. And I in fact got a different answer myself going through it because I did not look in males specifically. I looked in the aggregate. Jane, is that, oh, okay, I was worried. Okay. So we're gonna take a look at our, our ELA students and let's go to fifth grade. So I come, I apply the fifth grade filter, click on it. And I can come hover, 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 hover. This bar chart at the bottom, and here's where I can see, um, just as Dr. Sultan was reminding us a few minutes ago, I look over across the black non-Hispanic row and I look down the male column. Notice there's no bar graph there for distinguished performance for our black male students in the fifth grade on that ELA performance. We have fifty-seven point one percent performing at the proficient level. Does that scan to you in terms of being able to discern whether that's what it should be? But you see those figures there?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the, the no show is a function of the level of the number of, is it an insufficient N or it's just not there?
It is, I don't know off the top of my head, but I would anticipate Hans that one or the other would manifest the same way. So, uh, one thing that we've not yet gotten to emulate, that say the Georgia Insights does, is to indicate not, you know, insufficient students as opposed to just those students performed.
So what, so I'm, if I'm looking at it, I see that there are female, black, non-Hispanic, you have fourteen point three percent or five students. Five students is in no way a statistically significant number, so it means that it, sorry.
Now, I take, I take it back. No, for the sub, for the subgroup performance, the absence of a bar on this view is there are just zero students because we don't.
Zero students, yeah. But I was gonna say the N is small enough on some of these that it, it would imply to me that it's just there, it's the zero.
Not for the right, yes. We didn't perform better kids that way. Okay, let's take a, and the, the third one asking about content area, you know, we have seen one area we've gone down a bit, it's been science. EOC, content area, we've seen the, the highest level of performance was what, Ms. Anderson?
Was it, I'm going from memory, sorry. Oh, we didn't get that.
Oh, see, that's your, your English, that's your projection. Biology, yeah, there, there you go. It was bio. Yes, doctor! Okay, so biology is it, however, so, you know, ninety-five point two percent, great, that was, you know, twenty twenty-one. However, if we come down to the bottom and we start to hover over what are our current levels of performance, we see underperformance by black students, we see the highest level of distinguished performance by white students. We continue to see some of the gaps that we know are endemic in our particular, in our school system.
Can you show how you got for that?
Absolutely. So sure. So the, it's all in this bottom row. And I'm hovering over bios, so it's bringing me the bio breakdown. If I shift over to US history, it shows me the US history breakdown. Does that answer your question, Dr. Sultan? Awesome. Okay. Uh, and there was a question there for the, I don't, did anyone get to the CCRPI question? No, okay. One thing I do want to point out to you too, as you turn around and hopefully use this in your constituent conversations as you try to delve into your areas of passion, uh, we've put these little question mark icons here too, to explain once the data. For example, at the high school level, are, if you, if you look at our participation, the number of tests for the state GMAx for US history, if our student takes the AP US history, they don't need to take the state test. And so you see fewer students participate in that test than you might expect, given our, our class sizes. We indicate that here on this help page. We indicate that if we have a subgroup of fewer than fifteen students, in order to protect student data privacy, we're not going to put that information out there because you get a little too close to figuring out what. In order to protect student data privacy, we're not going to put that information out there because you get a little too close to figuring out what particular kid is this. Makes sense so far?
Yes, that explains why such studies for thirty eight tests. ELA is twenty nine.
Exactly. Exactly right. And you see that we come hover, hover over US history, two hundred and twenty nine, but we take that over to. American Lit, more than twice as many bio more. Yes, it's because overwhelmingly AP US history. I don't think I'm misspeaking, but someone in the back will. Correct me or throw something at me. AP US history is our most highly participated in AP test. Right? Cause like every sophomore is in it. Mia is nodding her head. So it must be, yeah, you got it. Yeah. All right. Cool.
Yeah. And I'm not sure if this is for the platform and some of this may not be able to be answered. We get the grade left, like I notice sometimes it said number of grades, right? Does that mean for that particular test? It could be a ninth grader, a tenth grader, a eleventh grader, twelfth grader.
That's an interesting thing that I noticed too, going through and, and looking at the data is when we click grade by grade.
Yep.
We will see some, so we will see some differences. So. You know, most students will take a particular EOC at a particular grade level, but sometimes you will do retakes. Or for some reason, there's another reason they're at a different grade level when they sit for the exam. And their outcomes might be different. Like I just saw right here, American Lit. Set low, low seventies for our 10th grade test takers, but also four hundred and eighty seven of them. Are students who are logged as being juniors when they take it, those outcomes are lower. Does that, does it, does that approximate that answer the question you're asking?
It turns out that we're looking at the test performance when if we. Say that for later. That's one other thing. I wonder if this can be answered now. If a student is in AP US history. Um, they don't take the EOC as long as they take the exam, or do we have students who are taking AP US history, electing not to take the exam? And then not being counted in testing form.
I don't know that I have a firm answer to that. I don't know that I can answer that.
And your AP US history student is still also included in here, right? Just based upon the number of test takers you have.
I didn't swear to it, but that made it.
Because if you probably add your test takers of US history and your test takers of AP, you would get probably a full cohort.
So when we're looking at state and sheriff, then we've done. You know, other schools might have juniors and we have tenth grader and one grader, I guess. We just look at the grade level, right?
The, the grade level that they were in when they took the test. Which is often really about how we look at that. It's not, it's definitely not the grade level they're in unless.
Has a question for the IV bio kids mixed in with these bio grades too?
I, I don't know if IB bio sits for the bio.
IB bio, we talked about that yesterday. That was eleven something? Or is it EOC number?
Yeah.
You can't waive bio EOC, only US history because it's not a federal requirement.
Okay. Public dashboards, they're out there, they're at your fingertips. We're continuing to work on them, um, with some, and I'll show you a sneak preview. After a couple of folks come up and speak after me, one, um, for our advanced academics. I do want to take a moment to, and kind of, and this is, oh, reconnect. Um, Tia, really for, um, Ms. Burton, uh, our map performance. So MAP, as you all know, is an assessment. Uh, that went away last year. Last year was our last administration of MAP. Um, and we're transitioning, uh, frankly, right now, we've had kids today take SARS. We have a consistent K-12 universal screener. Um, we don't have a public facing MAP or STAR dashboard yet. Um, it's, it's in a queue. But I do want to show you some snapshots of what our MAP performance was in, uh, in this last spring administration. And really focus on how things have been with our elementary students. And so. And you'll see as it spins, this viz is doing a lot of lifting and really doesn't lend itself to screen time with you all today. So I'm going to show you just a few things worth noting, but I think ultimately will not be particularly surprising. And you might see college heights accidentally get, uh, included again, but we don't have kids in college heights getting, who'd take MAP. They're just listed here for completion sake. So in the aggregate, no particular surprise. You'll see here's ours. This is our spring MAP reading breakdown, beginning developing proficiency. The vast majority of students performing at the distinguished level. And we see a very similar trend. You'll see these bars move slightly when we transition over to look at math. Distinguished went up a little bit. I think it was developing and proficient maybe moved down ever so slightly. We have in the aggregate, high level of performance on MAP. However. We have a couple of critical dimensions where we don't see that performance really, uh, break out evenly. So if we look at our white students. We will see these bars transition and this, this echoes what we did in November at the Solarium. I remember sitting next to you, Dr. Sultan. We saw some of this together in that earlier mockup. Um, we see a higher level of distinguished performance. That's about a fif, I think about a fifteen percent jump up. And it's the same if we're to look at reading, reading instead. When we. Transition our view back to look at our. Black students, we see. Come on, first rec center. We don't see that long tail. We see, we don't, yes, our distinguished performance is the highest group, but we see beginning learners. We didn't see any beginning learners when we looked at our elementary test takers, um, performing on, on, on MAP. And if we take a look at our free reduced lunch, oh, and you might not have caught this just now. You'll notice our free reduced lunch population, that dial also receives the filter. We look to see at our performance for students supported by the free reduced lunch program. And I'm just going to click on the students who receive free lunch, which is the larger piece of the wedge.
For gender, they're fifty two, forty eight, whatever. That's the total student population?
Yes. You see this, we see very comparable free reduced lunch. We're not seeing the outcomes. We're not delivering for our kids in that way who are supported by the food is lunch population. That's the car, clearing call to all. Um, one of the things that I remember hearing Dr. Whitaker talk about, um, very early on, on her arrival was that. Uh, literacy and reading outcomes begin in utero. Um, and if we can't do it in utero, it begins certainly in early, in the early childhood center. So I'm going to stop presenting data for a little bit. I'll be back later, but I'm going to transition over to Ms. Burton and Mary. To talk about some early childhood stuff. Give me a second to kind of pull your presentation up.
Everybody, good afternoon. Um. I, uh, I have the, you know, Esther really teed me up to talk about early learning. Um, coming from our MAP scores and Dr. Lembeck really teed me up talking about charter. Because our early learning center is really going to be supported through our charter work. Um, so one of the things when, when I was charged with this early learning center. Um, I turned to some experts in the field. Um, and to really help us determine an early childhood strategy. Um, what is our strategy, um, to make the most impact in city schools of the category? Um, and so a couple of those folks. Are Candor and company. Um, I'm working with Robin Tetter and Sydney Avern. Um, and they have a lot of experience really digging into the philanthropic work. Um, around early learning, um, and creating the systems and the partnerships necessary to bring impactful early learning to life. Um, and then I have also Legacy Thirty Three, which is, uh, Mary Early, who is with us today. Um, and Mary has vast experience in working with, um, kind of marginalized groups. Um, and making change in communities. Um, and so I will pass it on to you in a minute.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I am Mary Early's Mary with an I. Sorry to add confusion, but it's Mary with an I. Um, and I'm super excited to be here to talk with you about this early learning center. Um, to share in this journey about some really important work for our kids in this community. Um, so we have embraced the idea of the, the vision for city schools of the cater. Um, we want to make sure that this is a best in class facility that we are, uh, supporting our students from cradle to career. Right? All kids from cradle to career. And so just as Dr. Whitaker has shared with you, learning begins in utero. We want to be able to grab them as quickly as they are here to be able to support their learning and ensure that they are kindergarten ready. Third grade ready, high school ready and community career ready, right? So, um, we are looking also to balance because the city schools of the cater have done a phenomenal job. You just looked at your data, you're doing wonderful things and there's an opportunity for us to do a little bit more for a population that is. Not receiving the support that they need right now. So. Okay. I'll turn it back over to Jennifer to talk a little bit about the research.
So the research is clear. Um, so why do we focus on early childhood? Um, and you'll see in these next slides that, you know, our learning really, um, be. At birth, then back in the zero three range, that's where we make the most impact on students when it comes to development. The times you hear me talk about the chance of reading, that's all about how the brain is learning to read. Um, how it's how we're, um, growing their synapses and dendrites, um, even at a little young age. Um, so we want to get in with our students right away from beginning at birth. Um, so our adults that participate in high quality early learning are found to be more likely to be employed. Graduated from high school, have higher earnings. And so this is really about, Dr. Whitaker talks about, when this project comes to fruition, we're all going to be sitting out on our porches. And our rocking chairs, um, and, um, and that's where we'll see this impactful work. Really, um, really benefit our students, but then as they go into adulthood and our, our city community. Um, and then I had to put something in about money because I knew Dr. Broom would be here. Um, so you know, early learning invested, every dollar invested in early learning. Um, can yield returns between four and sixteen dollars. Um, so this is, um, this really is a win-win for the city.
So there is still a lot of information that we are gathering. We are just beginning this process. But we did want to take some time to let you know where we are, where we're headed, and also how you all can help us in this work. Um, so we have a pathway that we are engaging in for our project plan. Okay, there we go. Um, that is, has four components. Our first one is financial stability or sustainability, community integration and communication, high quality staff. And continuous improvement. These are our four focal points. Key inputs that we are working towards to ensure that we have a really sustainable and viable program for our children. Uh, financial stability, we want to ensure that it is environmentally and fiscally sound, sustainable. Um, to support our program goals as well as the equity targets that we're looking for. To address the issues that we saw when we did our data, did a few minutes ago. Um, we also want to include, include our community by building a responsive model that integrates the support from our local, um, stakeholders. That work has already begun. We are, um, engaging with community. I've been to the DHA and had several meetings with them. Um, attending their resident meetings. Um, we're doing a parent survey that we began at the back to school bash. Right? I met a lot of you at the back to school bash. Um. And so we're gathering that data as well, and we're going to be making visits. We've already started that as well. Making visits to individual schools. We've been to Glenwood already. We've been to, uh, Winona Park. Beautiful magical place. I love Winona Park. I wanted to stay in that backyard the whole day, but it was, it was fantastic. Um, and we also have visits scheduled for each of the schools, even the middle schools and the high school. Because we want to make sure that we're including everyone's voice. Um, we also have a process I'm going to talk to you about in a few minutes called PATH that, um. Is a, a, a process for us to, um, gather and synthesize, understand and envision as we go into the architecture portion of the building. But I'll talk to you about that in a minute. Um, for a little further down the road, we'll be talking about staff. We're thinking about this now, in terms of our programming needs. Um, and the hiring and that piece does come a little further down the road as we talk about our timeline. Um, with our goal of improving quality learning in our early learning program, we're not replacing college heights. Um, this is a supplement to the program. We also want to be able to embrace what is currently happening at, at college heights. And there may be, uh, an avenue for us to work together and enhance learning for all kids. Those who stay at college heights and those who might be coming to the new early learning center.
All right. So our strategic accelerators, our work, this really lives actually in organizational effectiveness and excellence. Um, but at the same time, we know that we are going to see this work spill into our student success in all.
So. How do we get this vision? How do we bring it into and a realization, right? How do we make this something real? Um, I wanted to just share with you some bits and pieces from our timeline and, um. With the understanding that we have a sense of urgency. We are slated to open fall twenty twenty seven. And it sounds like far away, far, far away, but it is not. It is right around the corner, right? And for those of us, I've been working closely with Sergio and, and Lenita and Nicole and Francis and everybody, right? We've been working, trying to, to make this happen. It is, we are fast forward already. So starting with the end in mind, fall twenty twenty seven is when we want to open this beautiful new early learning center. It'll be at the location across the street from Electric Avenue at the intersection of West Trinity Place and Commerce. Uh, and Electric Avenue, right? Where that, um, current city schools of the Gator property vacant property is right now. Um. But what does that look like now? So. Now it looks like doing a landscape analysis. We've been doing, um, a lot of gathering information, building relationships. I know Dr. Avosa talked about building trust and in communities, sometimes that a marginalized trust is a big thing. Right? So we want to take time and cultivate those relationships to help them understand that. Our actions match what our words are going to say and that we are looking out for their wellbeing and then for their, for their children's wellbeing. And that this will be making a difference and it will transform their community and it will help build a stronger workforce for our community as we. As they grow and matriculate through school. Um, we are creating a sense of urgency. Right? When we look at the data, if you're, if you don't dig, you will miss it. When you don't dig, you will not see that there's a population that is, that needs some help, right? And so this is our platform and our clearing call to start as soon as we can receive them. To ensure that we are providing adequate nutrition, uh, parenting classes. Um, introduction to learning and reading letters and colors and numbers, right? When I was a principal, I had kids coming to me in kindergarten that didn't know their name. They didn't know the difference between letters and numbers. They didn't know how to eat with a fork. They didn't know how to stand in a line. They didn't know anything. And we can't let that continue to happen. We cannot let that continue to happen. And so we want to be able to address these needs so that we don't have to look at third grade math data or, or milestones data and say. or, uh, milestones data and say that we have third-grade black male students who can't read. We don't have to look at the EOC data and see that there are no black male students who are in a distinguished category in a, in a subject area. We don't want to do that anymore. So we need to start now supporting them from cradle to career and ensuring that we are providing the very best for our kids. So, uh, what does that look like? Next, we are forming our strategic visioning process, and that begins tomorrow. Tomorrow, we will be, um, meeting with a group of our stakeholders, um, some who are with the district, from the community. We are even advocating for some students to come in and participate in a PATH process. The PATH process is orchestrated by, um, an architecture firm, GMC Architecture Firm. And it is a two-part, uh, series where we understand, validate, manifest, and envision what we want the building to look like. What we started with was a questionnaire where they ask questions like, what does it mean to, uh, be Decatur-ish? What does it mean, or when you think about Decatur, what is it that comes first to your mind? What do you want people to know about Decatur? Um, what's important around sustainability and, uh, eco-friendly environment? Or what does net zero mean to you? All those types of questions, because we've already told them that some things are important. We told them that, that sustainability is important and being environmentally friendly is important. We told them that we've got to make sure that we're embracing marginalized population that includes those students from Somalia and Afghanistan. We've told them all of these things, and so now we are going to come together as a group. And we'll be, uh, consolidating our ideas and thoughts and decisions that we'd like to make to create what the building will look like. We want the building to look like what it needs to in order to be embracing of the cultures and sustainable for our academic rigor that we're running for our kids as well.
So we're really excited, um, about the PATH process tomorrow. We're going to be dreaming big, um, for our students, um, and our community. Um, and, uh, that is, like Mary said, a two-part process. Um, board members, you will have a modified PATH at the joint meeting with City Schools of Decatur and the City of Decatur. Um, so you guys will have an opportunity to go through that just in a smaller, uh, a condensed format. Um, because the full PATH is actually two days and it's four hours each day. Um, so, so we're, we're excited to dream big. Um, and we just, um, oops, that's okay. Um, so, that's all right, uh, that's all right. Um, but obviously, you know, for board members, you know, Dr. Whitaker, and then I am, you know, your best contact for all things early learning. But we wanted to also include Mary's contact information for community as things come up and questions. Um, she is, um, you know, of a great point of contact, um, as, as we move through this process. Um, so we really are in phase one. This is just the beginning. Um, but at the same time, moving with a sense of urgency to get us to fall of 2027.
Want to open the floor?
If, if I may, I just, I just want to make a quick, um, observation. And I think this is an example of where, uh, using the board to help drive the message in the community will be very, very helpful. Um, I, I, I know that we're at the very, very beginning here. Uh, I'm super appreciative of all the efforts and the thought that's gone into engaging the community and particularly the marginalized community here. This is, uh, really sort of the purpose of us actually developing this property so that we, we have approximate early learning child, or, uh, Early Childhood Learning Center. Um, I know this community and where I, I think, I mean, my hypothesis is where there's going to be conflict. It's going to be, um, principally related to preservation of green space versus our needs to try to build a functional, uh, ECLC. Um, and in my mind, there's absolutely no question that serving those kids is our first principal, primary, and, uh, most critical charge. Uh, and if we get a lot of pushback from the community about, well, we really wanted this to be a park. Um, I, I'd feel that that would be a good use of us to just remind the community that, um, that, that green space is going to come second to ensuring our kids are actually educated. Um, and, and I know that's putting it very, very bluntly, but, but, uh, to the extent that, that reinforcing that message is somewhat of a community-forward political message, I think using us to help do that is, uh, a good use of our time.
Thank you for that. And absolutely, uh, we are, we are 100% in alignment and in agreement. Um, what I have distributed is, um, just a flyer. If you are engaging with any parents in your community, please have them scan the QR and give us their feedback. This is their opportunity to have their voice without having to take time away from work or the obligations to provide their, their feedback. Um, and we do have a communication strategy. Thank you, Nicole, for helping us with that. That includes, um, some email blasts that will be going out starting the week of the 26th of August, so that all community members will begin to hear about what's happening. Um, and you're right, you know, part of the PATH process, um, is to address those types of questions. The green space has been a recurring thought and concern. We also want to preserve the trees, and we also want to have a place for people to be able to still go and have picnics or, you know, that kind of thing. And so all of that can be a part of the vision. It can be included in that. We also want to include our CTAE at the high school and find ways to incorporate their architecture pathway or the education pathway or culinary arts or, you know, all the different pathways. We feel like we can include them as well. And so all of the ways that we can connect builds a stronger bridge for this, for this project to be successful. Um, so we're looking for feedback and we welcome the feedback so that we can really make this as strong as possible.
And I want to thank you for, um, all of your feedback and our continuous conversations and one-on-ones around this project and participation, those of the community that you know that are passionate about this. Uh, we are, we will have representation from, we've reached out to everyone from the Decatur Business Association to CHOA, to all the downtown, the Decatur groups. And obviously, we have subject matter expertise because we do have, uh, college heights. Um, so yes, so I just wanted to, I go just thank you. Um, this is a part of the strategic plan. When I said it's 2027, everyone thought I was crazy. I said, but it's not impossible, um, just because of the land itself. We haven't gone in, in the ground yet, but at least you know that it is flat land. Um, I was just on a project that opened, uh, this year in my former role, and it was a refurbishing of a facility that was extremely good. And I know how long it took to make that happen, but the ability to work with the community is now a beacon of light in that community because this was something that the community was a part of and is able to provide and, and meet a need, and that's what I want for this. And I know you can do as well, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your time.
All right, so I'm going to take it from birth to IB and AP, to the other end of the spectrum. Um, so first I have our, um, our NYPD scores. So, um, students are NYPD students from sixth grade through 10th grade. Um, so it's a partnership across the middle school and then to high school. And in 10th grade, our students do a personal project. Um, and so here you can see our, um, 10th graders' scores. Just gonna drag this down a little bit. Um, and truly, they're about the same as they were last year. Um, important to note is that a passing score is three or above. When you see the, um, the N or the one, um, it looks like, or the N or the two. We didn't have any ones this past year. Um, that shows either students didn't participate or they didn't make the passing score. Some ways that we're addressing this for next year is now students are taking the Tools for Knowledge course. Um, and during, or Tools for Success, sorry, not Theory of Knowledge, Tools for Success. Um, and so the personal project will be part of that coursework. Previously, it was in advisement, and so there wasn't quite as much structure around it. Um, but now with, um, Tools for Success, we'll see some more structure, um, in helping our students, um, complete their personal projects.
Click back inside the slide.
Okay, thank you.
Um, good question.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, so my understanding is during this time, this was an N, it wasn't submitted. So I believe that this was a time, this was kind of COVID time, so there were some, that year you'll see it kind of stands out as we go through. Sure.
What is the middle years? I think I've asked this before. What is middle years? Is that the middle school?
It's sixth through 10th grade, so it actually crosses. So PYP, which is the Primary Years Program, is third through fifth. And then Middle Years is sixth through 10th, and all of our students participate in Middle Years. Then, when you get 11th, well, then, and I'll talk to you about one of the first. Which is the Diploma Program. So really important distinction here. We're looking at Diploma Program candidates and students that attain the diploma. There are students, many students that take IB courses, AP courses, but are not Diploma candidates. Diploma candidates have to take six courses over two years, and they do the Theory of Knowledge, um, course as well, okay? So there may be students there that aren't represented here that do take IB classes, okay? This is specific to Diploma candidates. For Diploma attainment, um, that is, so after you've done everything that a Diploma candidate has done, in addition, there's service, there's extended hours, um, it's extended essay. There are other things in addition, okay? Um, so this is, this is a, um, kind of a unique group that is really dialed in to IB, okay? So you can take IB classes. I might take IB Bio and AP Statistics, and I'm not represented in this group. This is a different group, okay? Um, and so here you can see that, um, you know, overall, our, um, our scores on our exams, the average did increase from last year a little bit. Um, and we did have more students about, uh, 25, um, attain our diploma. So there was an increase, um, from this year. You'll see that this is, so 2025, this is our current seniors right here, and these are our juniors. So there's a dip in students, um, of that, that cohort or that group choosing and selecting to be, um, Diploma candidates. And my understanding is that was a time when, um, there was a change made about paying for IB exams. And so at that point, my understanding, the theory is, is that there was some pullback from IB, like, oh, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to pay for these, and then we saw that swing back up.
Let me just make sure I'm reading this. So all of our students in our elementary, middle school in an IB, um,
Framework, it's an instructional framework, yes.
And then by the time we get to the middle years, we have 411 by the end of 10th grade that have elected to do the project. Is, is that what I'm reading from the 2024?
Yes.
Well, so I'm just looking at the trajectory here. So that last one, middle year, it has the number 411. But that means of the number of 10th graders, 411 are electing to do that. And then when we get to the Diploma Program, we're looking at for 2024,
A hundred and fifty.
A hundred and something. Okay, so that, and that would be of that same pool of 411.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so some students want to carry on and they want to be a part of the Diploma Program. Others want to be a part of the career-related program. Or others are doing a combination. There's dual enrollment. There are lots of options, okay? So here we have our, um, C, um, CP, um, Career Related Program. Um, and so you can see that we have about, you know, a little bit less that actually declared and became candidates. Um, but we did have more students make it across the line for the actual CP diploma, to receive that diploma. Um, and then here we have our current seniors that have selected CP and to be a part of the program, and then a big jump that are our juniors. Um, and my, um, in speaking to the folks at the high school, our IB and AP coordinator, along with the counselors, have really been reaching out to families and upped their communication over this past year to make sure that our students are aware of this opportunity. Um, and that's what they attribute this increase. All right, so moving to our AP scores. Um, have some really great news, um, when it comes to our AP scores. So first, I wanted to highlight our, um, AP students, number of students, our number of exams, and then students passing. So passing would be a three or higher. Um, and we have increased, so here is our percentage of students, um, that have a three or higher. Um, and we have increased this past year to 74%, which is a significant increase for, um, our AP pass rate. Some other, um, highlights. So we had the highest number of exams taken, um, indicator last year. We increased our APUSH or AP US History Pass Rate, um, by 30%. So the previous year, we were at 56%. Last year, we, 86% of our students passed AP US History. And then we've been growing in our AP Psychology and Computer Science Principles. For IB, we're still number one in the Southeast for IB DP Diploma attainment. Um, our scores on our exams exceeded the world average in Humanities and Arts. And then separately from IB and AP is the Georgia Bili literacy seal. But it, it is kind of a result, um, of IB. Um, we had over a hundred students receive the Bili literacy seal on their diploma, which means that they got a four or higher on the AP World Language Exam, in whatever their language was. Um, or on the IB exam, they got a five or higher. So we had over a hundred students also, um, So we had over a hundred students also um, received that.
Okay, so three hundred and fifty-eight students scored a three, not, three hundred and fifty-eight tests scored a three, is that correct?
That's right.
So if you took five tests and got a three on one of them, you're in that category.
Your number of AP classes, the number of students.
Yeah, I'm surprised that the number of total AP students, the number of exams is as close as it, as it is, I would have thought that gap would have been bigger, because you're taking two or three exams.
Because you're, you have people that will do some IB, don't do some AP, don't listen to enrollment, it's a pattern.
And also maybe taking it junior year, senior year, you know, because of the IB, I think you, you can we do have a lot of kind of overlap and mix. All right, so this is a reminder, we, we shared this last year and wanted to bring it back forward. Um, some things that are happening this year, so we've added pre-calculus and music theory. Um, our teachers attended summer institutes this summer, and we are starting to work with our teachers on pre-AP, which is um, just another resource in ways that we can build rigor um, in, in our high school courses. Next year, we will be adding African-American Studies, um, American Government at ninth grade. Um, we have selected a teacher, and that teacher will be attending training and summer institutes to be ready for both of those courses. Um, this year, for IB, uh, we'll be doing student-led IB learner profile conferences. Um, so that will be something that's new, where our students sit and have that conference with their parents. Um, we, we are up for evaluation this year, so the IB will be coming in March twelfth through fourteenth um, to give us feedback on our current program, so we'll be preparing for that this year. And then, of course, I've already talked about the Tools for Success course, which is new. Um, looking forward to next year, we have some exhibitions planned. Um, we wanna expand our CP offerings, and then we've gotta get ready for changes that are coming with our IB CP Program. So they are changing the syllabi in September for the following year in our CP courses, and so we're waiting for that information, we'll get it in September, and then make sure that we're ready to go um, for the following year. Career-related program, yep. Thank you for
Just wanna show a bit of a teaser for you, so you know something that we are working on, that is adjacent to what Ms. Burton was just talking about. And that is an AP IB version of the EOC, EOG scores um, dashboard. And I'm going to share it with you. Just to take a standard, so you'll see a familiar kind of design language, we wanna, you know, all these things look like they come from the same place. But we got it broken down by AP and um, IB scores. Uh, hovering over each of these bars, we'll do a similar demographics breakdown. Um, this is still being tweaked, and in fact, we made a pretty significant adjustments, um, since Cabinet got a preview of this just yesterday. Um, and Ms. Anderson, you asked a question at the board meeting about what more is coming, what's going on, and we talked uh, my answer included some of like, the people, systems involved, like vetting data and looking for consistency between, say, this dashboard, the KPIs that Amanda is gonna show you, and even things like our grading handbook. Because for cabinets, we had a cutoff for our IB scores of four, but the point, the inflection point that is in our grading handbook is a score of three. And so if you're paying super close attention, you'll see some of these bars have shifted. So um, just a very brief snapshot. Um, clicking on any one of these assessments, we'll be able to drill down and see the pattern over time, over the last five years of each of these assessments. So um, EOC, EOG, CCRPI that touches all kids, AP and IB, we want that to be touched by every single student, because access and participation in advanced academics can be a huge influencer on options for post-secondary. But really tying this back to what Ms. Bird was just talking about, this is the endpoint. The entree for kids to participate in this begins with that, like, early childhood experience. The ability to read, that elementary experience, and seeing AP and IB as accessible to them in a way that they will be successful, so um, this is a tailing indicator, but it's still a significant indicator, we wanna bring this insight, um, just as much as we're working on that for some of our other academics pieces. Sound good? All right, work in progress. More to come. I think Ms. Newton Scott.
Future Forward in the Early Learning Center. We talked about the end of the road, AB and IB in high school. But the question, I think for children that we often ask, is what are we doing now? Like, we know all of this, so what? So I wanna talk just for a few moments about how we are using this data for school improvement and what we've learned about ourselves. Um, so back in two thousand and four, I believe, when the research came out around response to intervention. And the premise was, we want to make sure that we have the things in place that we need so that students learn, and not just say they have a learning disability, but we need to make sure that we have done our work, to make sure that we have taught them in a way that they can learn. And so the whole research was around, how do we know that kids don't have a learning problem, and how do we identify where our instructional practices and problems are? And so from that research, it tells us that at the tier-one level, at the foundation of all that we do, eighty to eighty-five percent of our students achieving at or above grade level tells us that we have a solid curriculum framework, and we're doing our best work. Well, we've seen a little bit of our data today, and we are not quite there. To say that we have a solid tier-one instructional base for our students, we have lots of successes. You've seen in the POI where we've talked about our ranking with the state and against the metro, and we're always in the top ten. But if you look at the numbers, those numbers ain't comparison to the state, the state numbers are really low. Um, the metro numbers tend to be a little more competitive, depending upon which district you're looking at. But we still have work to do, all right?
So what I'm looking at there is seventy-five percent of middle schoolers who receive tier-one instruction are are distinguished in the, the, in the fourth, in the grade.
Yes, and this is our um, twenty-twenty-four spring GMAT data. We don't have math data to really look at how we're doing with math yet, but as soon as we get that, we can also um, look at that through that lens of how we're doing with tier-one. Now, John Hattie is an educational researcher who talks a lot about, how do we know what are the high-leverage practices? If we are doing this thing, what does it yield as a result of the impact on student learning? And so we want to make sure that we have the highest leverage practices, so that we have the highest impact on students, right? Um, one of the things that he has found in his research is that feedback is one of the most powerful influences on learning and achievement. But it is highly dependent upon the frequency and the timeliness in which it is given. So when we look at our teacher survey um, from the spring, we asked teachers, how often do you get feedback? And if you receive feedback at least once per month from someone around instructional practices. About fifty percent of folks said they strongly agree and agree, and almost fifty percent said they didn't. So about fifty-fifty, and so we can't get better if we don't share things that help us get better, right? And so, as we um, engaged in this work and really thought about Pascal, if you can help me with that handout, what are we going to do differently in order to see a change in student outcomes? So you all know I've been here, this is my twenty-ninth year, next year is my thirtieth year with me. And um, and I have, and I've seen lots of um, success. But one of the things that I still grapple with, as a leader who I've been indicated from Friday to retire is, why is it that we have this pocket of students that we are not yet serving well? And as a person who's been here my entire career, and knowing that we work with so many highly intelligent and trained people, I'm often asking myself, what is it that we don't know that we need to know? Because the will and the skill, I believe, is here in CSD, but there is some bit of knowledge that could help us grow even more. So I appreciate the partnership that we have embarked on with the University of Virginia and the Partnership for News and Education, did I get that? And one of the things that they helped us do with alongside the principals at the three-twelve schools is really identify where are we going to focus our work, right? And so the principals came together and said, we really need to ensure that we have this high-quality tier-one instruction, that our foundation is secure and strong, and we need to up our game in how we are giving feedback and monitoring what is happening in classrooms, so that if there is a teacher or a student or administrator who ever needs support, that we can identify quickly where that support is needed, and then provide the support that is needed, right? And so in order for the schools to do their work, we as a district have to identify what do we need to do to support the schools, to create the conditions so that the schools can do that? And so, teaching and learning along with, um, I say my department, my department of two, three, four. Okay, we're going to uh, work on building the curriculum components of an instructional infrastructure, because we know we have some gaps in assessments, so that we know in a timely fashion how kids are doing, so that we can respond to that. And we're going to implement a comprehensive data-driven approach to monitoring instruction, so that we can support the principals in doing that work. Um, and so you'll see on your handout, on the front side of it, we coined ourselves as the Cater Collective, because it is a subgroup of the principals, it's the three through twelve principals, because we are the schools that, they are the schools that have the integrated or integrated course testing. And you'll see um, a bit about who that team is made up of, and what our commitment was, and our purpose, that we crafted for engaging in the work, and then what our priorities are for this school year. And then lastly, this really resonated with me, and it was a quote from a book by Mike Schmoker called Focus. And I'm just gonna read the quote, "We will never master or implement what is most important for kids if we continue to pursue multiple new initiatives before we implement our highest priority strategies and structures." Collins had schools in mind when he wrote that effective social sector organizations suffer from an addiction to doing many things instead of just a few. To su- to succeed, he notes, we must attain piercing clarity about how to produce the best long-term results, and then exercise the relentless discipline to say no thank you to opportunities that fail the hedgehog test. So we have asked our leaders to really hone their focus on these two big rocks. They have developed ninety-day plans, not a full school year, but what are you gonna do these first ninety days of school and commit to and support teachers with? We're gonna come back in ninety days, check in, we're gonna monitor along the way, are you doing the thing that you said you were gonna do? What supports do you need from us to help you do that work? And then at the end of ninety days, we'll retune and tweak the plan for the next ninety days of school. So I just wanted to give you a taste of what we're doing differently this school year um, in response to what our data is showing us.
I, I actually Googled it when she said that, says, "Understanding your people, or what they're truly passionate about, identifying the organization does better than anyone else." And determining if it's good at generating revenue, but I don't know if that's the same hedgehog.
No, it's, it's in good, it's very, it's kind of like the flywheel effect, it's like a, it's kind of a
So it talks about um, that, it's, I think it's the fox and the hedgehog, right? And the fox can do many things, but the hedgehog can do one thing really well, and how that will kind of um, outrun or outweigh the one, the one thing, uh, or the fox that can do many things, and, and that person is doing a lot of different things, but the the one who can hone in and do that one thing well, usually has great But it comes from the great. Jim Collins, I believe, right?
What's the frequency at which teachers are normally given classroom feedback, and who's normally responsible? It seems like, you know, the school-wide talent street has had a lot of teachers, that that would be a lot for children to do on their own, so.
I, we're gonna, I wanna pause you on that, because really the thing, they are about to, uh, actually, Ms. Amy Scott is about to run, Dr. Wilson to, uh, Wilson Street, because or Wilson Center, because they are about to engage in professional learning around the type of feedback, the pre- uh, the frequency of the feedback, their he has a team, it's not just him, so there's him, there's the, there's the assistant principals, there are instructional coaches, all of those people are a part of the team that should be providing feedback. But I'm gonna say they're about to get a little learning on it, and then we'll be able to say what to
But can we say like, at the very least, the fatigue they have to do twice a year?
Yes, but that, that's not one of them.
That's more than they're doing currently, so in your plan, they would be getting more feedback.
That would be form, that would be formal, the formal feedback for evaluation.
Yes, this, I'm talking about feedback that's not evaluative.
Last moment, last moment. So um, one of the things that I've talked to everyone about is the strategic plan. And so, the strategic plan was unveiled. I say oftentimes, like, literally reading before I started. Yes, that was the case, but we have had a year to really work through the plan, uh, really identify some objectives, so the front page still looks the same. It's everything that was, we talked about in the past, or what was here before I arrived. It was the foundational work for how all indicator was created. But then there was the backup. These were some of the things that in our strategic accelerators, these objectives, the accelerators stayed the same. Uh, the initiatives stayed the same, but the objectives actually have changed. And so in that community, one of the last boards, the second to the last board retreats, what we found was, how do we put the students first? That was one of the things that I was asked to do, where we revised the strategic plan. So the Theory of Knowledge really reads now, that you begin with the students. So student success in all areas is number one. In order to do that, the students have to be included. So we are building and sustaining and engaging and So we are building and sustaining and engaging and inclusive culture. To build that type of culture, you have to have highly qualified. Staff and professionals to do so. So we need to cultivate and retain them. And all of this must be supported by an organization that is effective and sexy. So this is the revised, if you will. We called it the shiny sheet before, so it's shiny again. And so they will be able to be present in the community. But not everyone is going to be able to keep up with the sheet. But. Everyone access is assembly. Because assembly is really everything for the board. So.
So we now have, as of this morning, all of the hard work that you did and supported around these objectives. And around the key performance indicators that we talked about in the retreat last spring are now visible to the public in assembly. So on your laptops, I tried to open a screen for you all in assembly if you wanted to follow along or you can look here. But when you go into assembly, no login because again, it's the public facing page. And you first log in, you land on the homepage of assembly. As of this morning, what you will be able to see across the top. We're used to, we're in this room, we're used to clicking on meetings for our meetings. We're used to clicking on policies for policies. There's now this tab right here along the top that says planning. And if we select planning. Then what will come up is our strategic plan, which is the all indicator. It's the only option there right now. Oh, that's fine. It's because you're on the CSD page, so it's just playing the video. That's all good. And if we click on the all indicator. Alright, so this is where housing this information, again, commitment to the public to be transparent and share our information. So that shiny sheet that Dr. Whitaker just talked to. Is the first thing you see when you open that all indicator plan. And you can just, it's just the same graphic, so it has the information here. But it also has some other information. If you look along the side here. So there's a couple of tabs that are available. The first one says items and what that is, is it just kind of puts out again in a different mode. Each of the strategic accelerators and the objectives underneath it. So four strategic accelerators, four objectives. We call it lovingly the four by four. Alright, so you can see those there just kind of organized differently. Then, if you remember last spring, we all did some work around the KPIs. So I'm excited to let you know that our KPIs are also loaded in here based on each of those objectives. So the first one looks overwhelming because it is student achievement. And for student achievement, our objectives have to do with CCRPI content mastery. But we have that at different levels, at elementary, middle, and then our EOCs. So you'll see there's a number of different objectives there. You'll also see that we started populating it with data so that we can move forward in setting our goals and then saying whether or not we're meeting our KPIs. So you can see here the actual where it was for the baseline. So that's twenty-two, twenty-three. So before this. Before the strategic plan even started, where was the baseline, if it existed, right? Our notes, our target last year and our actual last year. Well, CCRPI hasn't come back out yet, so you'll see it looks like a lot of gray boxes, so. It's going to get even more exciting, right? But as we go down, again, you'll see CCRPI here. If I move to some of our other objectives that we have here, for example, under staffing, the KPIs that we align to them. One had to do with pay. We talked a lot about that last year. We talked about being in the top quartile of comparative metro districts. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we know we weren't. Our goal for this, as we talked about, was whether we are or not. Not quite there yet last year, right? Improvement, but did not meet it. So this will last us the life of our plan and it'll be able to go across. And it'll let us know where are we? What was our target, if there was one? What was our actual? And are we on status to make that target or do we not make it? So very transparent, very clear. So as we're moving into this year. We will, the, once we get all the data, we will be setting the targets and then, you know, we know these are lagging indicators. We talked about that last time. So that we know where, then actually if we meet it. So as we get data, we'll be filling it in, being able to look at it. Public, transparent, clear. We talked last time about how these again are the lagging indicators. We know that there's metrics that help us know whether we're not on track to meet these. Those are the types of things that we talk about in our regular board meetings. So when you get that GMASS update or you get that MAP update or STAR update. We'll be able to talk about some of those interim metrics that say, oh, these are the signs that show we're on track. We feel like we're going to be able to meet our goals. Or we're not, we need to pivot and this is our new strategy. So. Yes.
So in reports, there are other visuals. This would be truly the four by four. Which is your strategy map for the strategic plan itself. The balanced scorecard, which is a more. Which you saw earlier. And so. All of this is here. This is more so just an opportunity for you to see. The commitment to transparency of this organization is that from today's. Programming, from board of ethics or your your ethics conversation to what is a charter system. To understanding milestones, to understanding map scores. To having front-facing dashboards, to now having the strategic plan online. All of this is front-facing so that we can be transparent. As possible with the data systems that are already in place and that we're built. That's it.
Is there a plan to, like, maybe kind of bearing the letters to highlight this?
All of this is in soup scoops and staff scoops. You kind of heard them say, all of it's coming up this month and what's going to roll out in staff scoop and soup scoop.
I think it's really helpful. We use scorecards. At my job all the time. You can follow them. So even if you don't really like it.
You can only see it, exactly. Yeah.
So that that is the goal, to be as transparent as possible.
Thanks. Hans, I don't know if you're still there.